All right, I called this session of the Orem Planning Commission meeting work session to order at 4:32 PM on February 19th, 2025 in the city council chambers. We will begin by talking about the general plan and timeline concepts, and then we'll have a discussion about C2 zones. So, starting with general, Jared?
Thanks. Now, this is just to be, to be clear, this is just a conversation that we wanted to have about where we're headed with the general plan as we, as we kind of kick that project for the update into gear. We got some ideas so far, but we thought it would be a good idea to start with a conversation about the form that that might take and how many meetings we need to have, et cetera, and just get a, get a really good idea of the, of the timelines that might be necessary for adoption. So, and we also have Grace and Grant put together for you your paper copies of the plan there here somewhere. Are they on your desk?
Yes.
They're already distributed. Look at that.
Thank you.
Yep, there you go. The general plan ferries have left those for you. Please enjoy them. The, um, the appendices, those don't include all the appendices. There's, there's a lot of paperwork there, too. It would be a much bigger packet there, but that stuff's all available. We'll make it available to online as well in an email. But if there's anything else you want paper wise, as we go through this process, sometimes it's good to scratch things out and make notes just by hand. It helps, helps the thought process some. So talking about the general plan and this 2025 update, it is one of the areas of focus for the council and mayor this year to get an update going and done. We talked about a timeline to bring this to the planning commission, looking at it going backwards to the, to now. If it's going to be adopted in 2025, we figure we better have it at the planning commission for public hearing in September. There are maybe 12 planning commission meetings from now till September for those public hearings. So the question becomes, do you think that there need to be additional meetings? Do you think we might need additional meetings? And how open to you, open are you to having a work meeting that's not on a scheduled meeting night if we need to add one or two to make sure we're, we're involved in the process all the way through? How do you guys feel about that?
Commission, are we good if we need some extras? We can also have our meetings, if we have a shorter business, we can have our meetings and we can also stay and talk with work session. That does work, too.
Yeah, and there might, as we look at, as we get to drafts, that's probably going to be necessary if that's okay. So they might get a little longer than, than normal if that's all right. So.
How, how far into these additional appendix items that we reference are we going into? Are we going into them in general?
Yeah, there, there might, a lot of the, a lot of the appendices right now are data. But in the future, one of the things that we're talking about, and this is something we can talk about tonight, our sort of first blush vision of a new general plan update might be that more things wind up in the appendix as a, making the plan more readable. We don't know what things necessarily right now. Right now, mostly it's just data that you'd want to reference. It'll be referenced in the, in the, in the plan. So in the future, it might be more things, though. Whole, whole sections might be in the appendix instead.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have whole section. We have the transportation master plan, we have the bike and pedestrian plan.
Yep.
So those are, those are big documents in and of themselves. I just wonder how, how much we're going into them.
And see, those were, those were, those are plans, and there's, there's going to be more of those kinds of things, stationary plans and things like that. They're, they're adopted separately and then added to the general plan as amendments, right? So they become part of the appendix.
But I mean, they have bearing on the, on the master plan.
Definitely.
As a whole, so I was just curious how, how in-depth Lou would be going into discussing them.
That's a good question, and we, we can go as in-depth as we, as we need to or want to. Transportation plays a big role and has an impact on, on your community development, on the neighborhood preservation, on the economic development portions, Gary?
One of the things with that, that I would, we recently went through a transportation master plan process, and I think one of the things about transportation is in the general plan, if we couldn't set out principles, guiding principles, or things that guide us when we do a transportation master plan. I don't know that with the timeframes that we're looking at, that it's, that we could really go into detail of the transportation master plan, of the bike plan, of individual plans that may be in appendices to the general plan. But maybe what we put in the general plan is, okay, the next time we do a transportation master plan, these are the principles or the premise upon which we base that plan. You know, because a plan with transportation can turn out much differently depending on where you start and how you approach it. If the transportation master plan is, the underlying premise of it is, how do we move traffic throughout the Utah County region as quickly as possible and efficiently as possible? That might be a little different than an underlying premise of how do we protect existing single-family neighborhoods from traffic, if that makes sense? Some of the answers that we come up with in doing an in-depth transportation plan may be different based on where we start from and which direction we're facing. So I would propose that we don't get into the individual plans, but when it comes time for transportation, maybe a discussion of how these plans are done and how we can go about, what our approach in the future for Orem should be when we do that plan.
Okay. If I can ask a question, because you hit something that's a burr in my saddle. Where in the process do we start matching plans with money? Because transportation master plan or transportation improvements, infrastructure improvements, are going to have to go through a budgeting cycle. So how do we drive that process? And I may be showing my ignorance here, but when we talk about plans, somewhere needs to be, someone needs to somewhere be looking for money. And that's going to be in a tight commodity as we're in, seem to be in a cutting environment.
Yeah, and that's always the big issue with a plan, because on a theoretical basis, you start with your plan and you decide what you want to do. And then at the end of the day, I've seen so many plans that are great, fantastic plans. They look pretty, they're nice, they have lots of pictures and graphics, but they're completely unrealistic and they sit on a shelf. And, you know, everybody would like to live on the end of a cul-de-sac with a city park behind them. But that, from a transportation standpoint and a money standpoint, that's probably not realistic. So I think as we go through talking about transportation and how do we balance those, typically a plan then drives the projects that you need to achieve that plan, and then you look for the money to do those. But at the same time, you have to be realistic, knowing, well, this $100 million project is just not feasible. We're just not going to have money to do this. So what other things can we do? And that can be a part of talking about transportation, to put those types of principles into the general plan, that when we discuss transportation issues, how do we discuss that? How do we come up with the financing? The planning commission, your purview isn't really to deal with the financing of something. You do need to have an understanding of financing so that the plans that you are recommendations you give to the council are not completely unrealistic. But we can go through that process to try and educate the public on how transportation works within the context of the plan and how projects and CIPs are derived. That could be a really good study meeting when we get to that area of the plan, to come in and have some, you know, a meeting or two and spend a couple hours talking about that issue. And then we can frame how we move forward and what we put in our plan, our general plan.
So I'm tracking the, excuse me, not necessarily our purview, but then again, we are dealing with people who come in with all sorts of bright ideas that the infrastructure doesn't support. So somewhere amongst our recommendations to the city council or county commissioners, whoever, I believe in our plan, we have to be proposing some solutions. You know, otherwise we've got the guys who want to develop at Wilkerson Farms area, which is a train wreck already, and then they want to put a bunch of other stuff. And then we have the discussions where, you know, the people are appearing before the planning commission saying, well, we're talking about land use issues here. Well, yeah, we are, because you can't separate the two. They, land use does depend on infrastructure. And I, I just. As a personal observation, I think we kick the can down the road way too often. And we don't address really hard discussions and hard issues. And I realize it's not all our purview and, but, but just let it be known that I think that's a concern, that we're going to have to deal with more and more as we go. I mean, last Thursday example, look at the disaster driving home Thursday afternoon, that little teeny small storm. Place was paralyzed, and that's just, it just shows that the traffic is more than the infrastructure supports.
And Rod, I agree with you that, that we have had a tendency to kick things down the road and not have real discussions. And that's what I hope comes out of this. But I think this portion, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this portion of the general plan is kind of the thousand-foot, hundred, you know, the hundred to thousand-foot overview saying, what is the general thing we want? And then each of those plans dig further down. And I, you know, and I, to Gary's point, I think is we're having these discussions. I think if we put better, clearer guardrails, like even in the first section, land use, what's the difference between high, medium, and low density? What does that mean in our city? What do we want that to mean?
What does it mean and who wants what?
Right.
You know, what part of the citizens want, which, which variation?
And I think that's where we can be powerful, is in having those discussions and research them and discussing them and saying, hey, did, when we draft this and send this to city council and say, this is what we've come up with, that we can influence that conversation and maybe start some that aren't having by what we do in here.
Yeah, I could accept that. Thank you. I just want to raise the concern that we don't skim it too superficially, because even though it's just an appendix, you know, we need to find ways to bring it into the forefront, in my opinion.
So I was going to ask how big these neighborhood plans are, because they almost seem very pertinent to the overall general plan as well.
Yeah.
And it just seems like if, if we've got a plan based on certain areas of the, that it's not a bad idea to review them to some degree before.
Yeah, and they're all like seven, or I think they're all like seven years old now, at least.
Yeah, I'd have to defer.
Or it's a little more recent than that. I think they're staggered.
How long ago were the neighborhood plans developed, do we think?
So the, the last one was adopted in 2020, and then there was a five-year period where we did those.
Before. So everything's between five and 10 years old.
Correct.
In that, in that portion alone. But again, I think the purpose is that we need to get the basics down so that we can go back through those and really dig into them as well.
Those are good, those are good comments, and I think it, they kind of come back around to that big first question. The master transportation plan that's, that's adopted separately and then attached as an appendix here, I mean, it stands on its own, too, and it was researched and looked at on its own. And then the element for transportation in this general plan currently looks at things like access management and makes sort of broad recommendations about those kinds of things and, and would sort of inform that master transportation plan, right? And those are all valid points. The question becomes then, too, how far do we go into that element that's still going to be here? The master transportation plan is what it is, and until we update that separately, it's going to remain that way. But the element that you look at in this general plan update can help guide how that gets done in the future and maybe identify areas where we missed the mark or where it's, where it's too weak or whatever. And then also, how land use impacts that, where we're putting the density, like you're talking about, Madeline, and, and how that, how that impacts that and where the businesses are and what kind of access management programs we have. But also, how much do we want in that element to keep the general plan readable and referenceable so that, so that it is truly guiding and being used, like Gary said? So we're not just shelving it and saying, okay, that's fine. So that when we, when we look at concepts or, or projects that come in, like Whitestone or whatever, that it has a role to play and that we can easily look at it and say what that role is and have it, have an impact, have it, inform it. And that means it needs to be probably more streamlined than it even is. And it's ninety, Grace, how many pages did you say was 97 without the appendix right now? So to, to keep it more readable, how do we do that? So that it's easy for people to reference and understand, developers to look at and understand what, what the city's looking for, that you all can look at easily when you want to. We can reference it in reports. That's, that's kind of what we're thinking we want to shoot for. Is that the wrong aim or is that kind of the direction? Does that make sense?
No, I, and I don't mean to be derailing the train. That's not my intent.
No, no, absolutely.
But I, I read a version of the transportation plan line by line. It was 141 pages or something like that. And right in the plan, it said, the city planners and the city engineers do not agree on the plan. I thought, why you would publish that, I don't know, but I guess it's just, I'm trying to underscore and emphasize, whatever we do should not be divorced from reality, and whatever they come up with transportation shouldn't be disconnected with the, the general plan.
Yeah.
And I agree with you. It doesn't need to be long. I guess I'm talking about somewhere in the coordination, which I believe we, the planning commission, have a role in, is to kind of try to cross the Ts and dot the Is so that we're singing from the same hymnals or.
Yeah, and Rod, having done the transportation master plan and been through that, we were literally handed a document and told, what do you think? It had been drafted, it had been all beside, like it all decided before it got put in front of us. And we went through and we said, we don't agree with this, we don't agree with that. We talked about it for what, three, four months? And that was the best we could do with the document. And that's why I really appreciate that they, instead of going to a third party, paying somebody to write up a pretty document for us.
Right.
That we are actually going to get to sit here and go through section by section and decide what we want in it. And I think that is the power of what we get to do. So I totally, no, no, I know. I'm just saying that I totally agree with you that that transportation master plan is unreadable and has some really weird things in it, having read every page of it. Every one of those traffic calming measures, every one of those street designs, it's almost unwork, unusable to some extent because of how behemoth it is. And so, well, Jerry's laughing.
Question that I would have, we have these plans, and are they things that are really followed or it's just done in futility?
State law.
Other words, as we look back historically with plans that have been made, how close are they to matching what really has happened? I mean, I don't have any idea.
No, well, we never look at it because we never see it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's in here right now. There's a, there's a map of what.
There's a tiny map?
See, it's, there it is. First page. If you look at it, you can see things that, well, that's not medium density, that's definitely high density.
And remember, this was done.
This is residential, that's high density.
Yeah, but this was done when the state street master plan existed.
Yes.
So this was done to that. And that's something like, yeah, definitely. I mean, I'm sure it's on your list, but we're going to have to take a good look.
Make some adjustments to the land use map itself as well, yeah.
But, I mean, Gary can answer this question, but, but I, you, you ask how applicable this is. This is one of those things that our legislatures are discussing right now.
Right.
How applicable, how tied are we to our master plan?
Yeah, they're very tied to your master plan. So the general plan sits up here and kind of sets the stage for the transportation master plan, which then comes in and sits here. And then you come up with individual projects that you want to do and capital improvement plans and impact fee studies to do all that. And they sit here and then individual projects. So the plan or the transportation master plan, our impact fees, our utilities, they'll come and look at an area and say, oh, you want this to be agriculture for the next 30 years? They do their long-term planning, thinking, okay, it's going to be agriculture for the next 30 years. We don't need to put a sewer main out here. We don't need to put water. And so it drives all the other plans that ultimately drive down to what happens on the ground. I worked in a community where frankly, the, the council at that time didn't want to put anything in the general plan in an area of, of the city that was anything but agriculture. But yet outside of the meeting, you would talk to people and say, oh yeah, we know that's going to develop someday. We just want applicants to come in and make a general planned amendment and a request for a rezone to do those, so they'll give us better control over it. And it's like, well, but that's not a reasonable forecasting of what we likely suspect development really will be in the city. And then we had a situation where UDOT came in and we said, hold it, how come we're not doing improvements to this major road that runs through our city? And they said, oh, well, your plan calls for this for the next 30 years to be agricultural, and you're not going to have any residential out there. So we're not putting any plans because we took your plan and read it, and there's no need for us to do anything here. So what we're trying to do is give a realistic outlook of what we think development might be and the type of development, where it would be in the city, and how we should approach transportation and all of the other issues, ultimately like with parks. Why would the Parks Department worry about putting a park somewhere if our plan says we're not going to have any residential in that area unless it's a regional park? Now, that might make sense, but a local park? Why would you put a local park in the middle of an agricultural area? Well, you wouldn't. And so you, that's what we're trying to do, is get a realistic expectation of what it can be. And, and to Madeline's point, you know, we, we need to get on the same page of what's medium density, what's low density, what's high density? And when we're talking about things, do we want high, low, or medium in these areas? And then what impacts flows from those decisions?
Sounds reasonable.
So, sorry for the derailing.
You're fine.
I applaud the effort 100%, and if you want to have subgroup, working groups, I'm happy to, you know, do extra coordination with whoever we need to coordinate with.
And I think this might be a good place to try out some of our subcommittee options.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that as well.
That'd be great. That would be really helpful because that's to your to your other point, that we really do want this to be iterative. And that's why those twelve meetings we should have or we plan to have as staff, something on each of your work agendas related to this so that we're ready and you all feel comfortable with what you've what you're what you've got. And we'll try to keep the city council updated as we go as well with your progress so that they're not blindsided by it like you were like you feel like you were with the master transportation plan. We don't want that to happen. So we'll keep going and try to keep it realistic as we go. To Jim's point, it kind of raises the question, what does the state require? What are our kind of have to haves? And that's we will have to have, right now, we have an intro, we have an introduction, we have a land use section, we have an urban design section, housing, economics, transportation, parks and rec, public services, and then all those appendices. No matter what we do, no matter what modifications we make, keep in mind that we we are required to have a housing element that includes modern income housing. And we are required to have a water conservation element. And because of our frontrunner stationary, we have to have stationary plants. So those will have to be part of the main body of the of the plan. I suppose if they're included as appendices, they could be appendix. Could they? Could the modern income housing be an appendix and still be considered? I don't know. We'd have to look, I guess, but.
Yes, I think we could. You have to have a chapter or an element in there dealing like with housing.
Right.
And you where you talk about housing and your approach to housing. And you could put in goals for Orem. How much owner occupancy do you want to have? Do you want to encourage those types of things? And you put that in and then the actual plan, kind of like the transportation master plan, could be an appendix to that element. And so one of the ideas I've heard kicked around is that what we want in our general plan are all the principles, the guiding principles and goals and objectives that we have for whether it's land use or transportation or housing in the general plan that's easily read, people can see, we can refer to it frequently. And then maybe you go to an appendix to look at a plan that was hopefully constructed following those guiding principles.
So Gary, if I may follow up on that, and we can talk more about it later, because but you mentioned something I'm interested in. Is there just a quick question, if you want to take it offline, fine. Is there a way to codify in city code owner occupancy?
It depends. I'm not quite sure I know what you mean.
Well, like, it may be more of an HOA question, but if you're going to buy a property, you have to live in it for X number of years before you could rent it out. Or there certainly needs to be certain percentages of, this would be true of like townhomes and condominiums. But I read a just, to me, a disturbing fact, well, it was on the internet, so it may not be a fact, that Blackstone owns twenty four percent of the rentals in Orem. And to me, that's disturbing. And so I don't know, is there a way that we can codify that, you know, percentages? You mentioned goals. Like I said, we don't need to discuss it here, but I want to plant the seed that can we do these?
In in general, there are several tools that a community has. If you're looking at rentals, some communities around the country, and there are still some lawsuits going on with some of these things. But the direction seems to be that you can limit the number of rentals that one entity can can own and and go. Also, with rezoning, state laws changed recently where, as with a rezone, you can require owner occupancy for a certain number of years. I think it's a little low right now. I think it's five years. But, you know, a fifteen, twenty year owner occupancy requirement that could be imposed on a rezone or something like that. And then there and so what what can happen? Let's say there's a there's a goal that Orem wants to try and achieve a goal of our housing stock is eighty percent owner occupied. I'm just throwing out numbers. Then if that's what the community buys off on and the council approves, that becomes kind of the policy direction of the city. So now, when a rezone comes in, we say, well, how are you going to make this owner occupancy to help us achieve that goal? When we go for grants, what type of grants are we going to go for? Are we going to go for a grant that's going to help us encourage and enhance owner occupancy or some other type of grant? You know, and so it starts to get everybody in the city in alignment with the goal, long term goals and direction that the city leadership wants.
So maybe we can consider that as part of our plan as a goal or something.
Thing to talk, things to discuss. Absolutely. For the interest of time, we probably only have about five or 10 more minutes spent on this. We can get to the other topic. So let's.
Okay, we'll keep going. But great points, and I appreciate the discussion because that's what we need is we start drafting actual changes for you all to look at and consider. We need a little, we need to know these kinds of concerns and and where you're where you're hoping to head. Another thing to talk about just real quickly and to end up on, and we can move on is what are the most important things we ought to be looking at? I know from some of the conversations that we've had and and some of the things that I've heard and seen as the city considers different applications, I think I have an idea. But what is most heavy on your minds as a planning commission for land use decisions? Transportation seems like it's a it's a big issue. How are we? How are we succeeding or failing in as we try to inform those kinds of decisions? So that's that's one thing. Housing and and owner occupancy clearly is that's that's a that's something that we're all concerned about. How do we promote that as a goal? Other other ideas or other other things that come to mind are the protection of neighborhoods, the promotion of preserving those neighborhoods, those existing neighborhoods. How do you fit in new development and make that compatible? So that housing element becomes important. What are the things that we are we not talking about or that have been on your mind that we ought to be considering as we go forward?
Just as I look through the contents, it talks about urban design. That section, how much of that has been preempted by things that the state has changed over the last couple of years?
Probably a lot of it.
Yeah.
At least some of it. But that's going to deal more also with commercial development, too. It's not only going to be residential. So the state has stepped in and said, with single family homes and development, we can't dictate pretty codes, what we kind of colloquially call pretty codes. We can't dictate how many gables you have and and how much brick you use, et cetera. We can still regulate things like height and to some degree massing things, and we'll we'll do that. But with multifamily, those rules are not there. You can you can dictate some some use of materials and and form for multifamily, and you certainly can for commercial if you choose to do that. The question with that becomes a balance question. How much burden do you put on? How much do we want to burden the the business community with their developments and what they look like, et cetera? To the point, if if you go too far, then you're driving them out or making it difficult to do business, and you probably don't want to do that. But you don't want to do nothing and get stuff you don't like to look at that doesn't serve that purpose. So that becomes a question. Urban design can still be an element, definitely, or it could just be contained within other elements, maybe. How important is urban design to you as a commission, do you think? That kind of look, how much material we use, how much we control those kinds of issues in commercial development and multifamily?
Is there any of these topics, if you go down the contents from the introduction, which is history and background on Orem, land use, urban design, housing, economics, transportation, parks and recreation, and public services? Are there any of these that I would say that any of these are not important to have some form of discussion? I mean, I think in some levels, we need to just go through them. Yeah, but if we do one a week, I mean, one a meeting, that's eight out of twelve.
So we may need to, like you say, on light meetings, we might want to come back around after the work, after the regular session and come back into the work meeting. If that's all right, because it'll take time to go through these things. Economics is important. How do we keep promoting that commercial development that that drives, you know, what we're able to do, what we're able to afford?
I mean, yeah, the economics.
Costs money, right? So, yeah. We want to be careful with those sections and and make sure they're all aligned with your your thinking. So we're going to want to bring them around to you a lot, and we need to, we need to start with the very next meeting. So we'll bring in some some material, probably starting at the beginning, land use, and make sure those things are adjusted and 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 we're talking about them.
We talked about, or I know there's been discussion with the city council about coordinator collaborating between planning commission and city council. How much of those of those collaborations or getting on the same page sort of discussions are going to happen before the big heavy lifting of this happens, starts happening?
Do you mean like a joint meeting, council and planning commission meeting?
Yeah, or just or just like an establishment of of shared values or goals.
Yeah, Gary.
Good question.
Yeah, we're working on setting up a joint meeting with the planning commission of the council shooting for May.
So it would probably be one. That would probably be the sole one before we.
Yeah, but I don't think we've ever had one before. Or at least not in recent memory of people. And in the point of that, I think, is to get us not, you know, the the point of it wouldn't be to talk about an individual project that's coming to you, but kind of these high level principles about how do we deal with things? What's important to talk about and dig into a little more? And so we will have that opportunity in March, the second meeting of March. At the council, we're doing a work. When I say we, I'm using the royal we, I mean, Jared is presenting presenting to the municipal council, the a general plan. He'll take, you know, some of the things we're talking about here and timeframes and stuff like that and take to the council. So they'll have at least one meeting with that, knowing what we're working on, knowing by then we'll have some more conversation about what's important. So hopefully, when we do have that joint meeting, we could have a pretty fruitful conversation about this type of thing.
Great, thanks.
Good deal. Yeah, that that makes a lot of sense to that. We'll be we'll be doing that soon. And like, like I said, for in terms of timeline, we want to do all of these meetings as much as we can. We will try our best to have a draft, a full draft of all the changes that we've been talking about to you as we approach September, so in late July, first meeting in August. So you're seeing the final all collected draft before it comes to you as a public hearing item, when you're taking public comment and those meetings can get long. So we want you to be well versed in it long before that meeting, so you're not seeing it for the first time. And not even as a collected whole. You'll have seen all the little tiny sections as we go. We want you to see the collected whole. And the council will be aware of that, too, before we get to September. That's public hearing timeline date. So we need to move fast on it. We'll be we'll be pushing you hard on it.
Or the night that it needs to be approved, we could just bring you the whole thing and.
I'm willing to do that.
You know, I I hate to disrupt tradition.
Just put it in front of us. There you go.
Yeah, so that's the plan.
I mean, I think we are looking about one a meeting. Because even if we did one a meeting with eight sections, that alone would be March, April, May and June.
Yep. And then we have July to refine things and get you a draft.
And then we'd also have to accept that even if we had no business, we'd still have a work session.
Yeah.
At that time.
We won't be skipping any meetings. This this the real, the real distillation of it all is that there'll be no skip meetings. If you if you rejoice in those and you're glad when you get those emails, like we had to cancel a meeting, there won't be any between now and September. Okay, so and not, you know, recognizing there are meetings that people can't attend. So this stuff will all come out to you.
Sorry, is there a value in in longer meetings versus more frequent meetings? Do we have preferences or that, or is that a factor?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite, I couldn't hear quite.
So is there a are there different values associated with longer meetings versus more frequent meetings? Trade off?
Yeah, I'm less grumpy and more frequent as opposed to longer, but there's, you know, that's just me. I don't know that there really is.
Conversation.
That's true.
I don't know. I that it's kind of an individual thing. It depends on your kind of.
And honestly, this may require both. You know, I think we will need every meeting, but there will be some issues and items that we'll talk about that may need three hours of discussion. And that's why we've got a work meeting and we can just, if we don't have any items to deal with, we can just keep going.
And equally, if we find things during, if we started the discussion on land use and we decide that, no, we really need to drill down into housing or we need to drill down into our commercial zones, that we can use that as a, say, hey, we need to schedule something, too.
And what we would want to do too, oh, sorry, Gary, go ahead.
And I was gonna say, and this could be the perfect use of, you know, in the bylaws, we anticipated subcommittees. So this could be a good thing for the planning commission, say, you know, I really want to dig into urban design or I like urban design, let me dig into that. And you might spend a lot of time with staff and then come back and report or a couple of you.
Yeah. And as far as those subcommittees and who wants to do that, I think maybe next meeting, if everyone could take a little bit of time to read through here and flip through here and say, maybe identify a couple of sections that you'd be particularly interested in. That would be really helpful for next time so that we can maybe make some of those assignments so people can focus a little more on one section versus another. So.
Okay.
Okay, so. Good.
Oh, no, please, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, just as far as plan, just so we can move on, just so next time, is it come back with your subcommittees? Are we going to start with the intro and what's in the intro?
Yes, we'll start with the intro and 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 some potential changes to that and to form.
Okay.
And what we want to do is send that to you also. This is the last point, and Britain's question kind of brings this up. What we ought to do and need to do is send you the stuff that we're drafting and working on and the ideas that we're kicking around for you to consider with your packet, with your with your meeting packet. So you have it before the meeting. And then in the meeting, as we're discussing things and making notes, we'll adjust everything that got said and send that back out to you as a recap of the meeting. So if you miss a meeting because you have a vacation or you're gone or you're sick or whatever, you're still going to see the information as we're doing these frequently, and you're going to see a recap of what happened at the meeting, too.
If you have that before our packets come out, could you send it to us? Because to go through a hundred plus page, depending on what's before us, packet and have to go through the language and compare it to the new and the old. I know I would like a little bit more time, but just if we can get that, we really can have more than one email.
Yeah, you can you can handle that. Yeah, we can absolutely do that. So as we have it ready, we'll definitely send it early if we can.
Thank you.
It'll it'll be, you know, it might not be more than a few days before, but if we can get it to you, and as soon as we have it, we'll send it. We won't wait for the packet.
Even if you can get it to us before on Monday, before Thursday, that still helps. So.
That that makes sense. When we have it, we won't wait for the packet to send it with, as we have it, we'll send it to you for consideration.
Thank you.
That work?
Yeah.
Okay.
So are we good to move on to item two for discussion of C two zones?
I think as long as everyone's comfortable, yeah.
Is everyone good?
Okay.
No, but I'm all right.
You'll survive for another few.
Okay. This is a, this is a concept we wanted to bring to you. It's come up in a couple of instances, and so I'm going to try to explain this, the situation without not making any sense. As we look at C two and C three zoning, I know there's been discussions that will sound familiar to all of you, more familiar to you than to me, about gas stations in C three zones. Is that right? Yeah. Where the gas station should be allowed in C three zoning, service stations, et cetera. So that brings up a couple of other questions. There are along important corridors and in important economic areas of the city. There are what real estate agents call hard corners, right? The very visible corners of very visible intersections, highly highly trafficked intersections. Those are very valuable and it's 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 a question that we wanted to ask. Do those do those high traffic, high visibility areas? What kind of uses belong there? Do we want to more tightly control the kinds of uses that are allowed there so that they don't get populated by a gas station? Or a a use that doesn't necessarily contribute as much to the tax base because eggs cost money? Like a bank or something like that? Are there uses that we want to consider restricting on those corners? And how would we do that? What would that look like? I did a little looking for some kind of code that that leaves a main zone in place and then further restricts those corners somehow, and I haven't found one yet. I know there's one out there because it's a big world, but it'll take a little doing to find.
Couldn't we just make a C four zone and designate the corners of C four?
We could. That's a method that we could employ. That's the reason for this conversation is if we wanted to do that, how would we go about looking at that? What would make sense?
And I've wondered along the line of this is really a bigger, like when I saw it introduced, like that was part of my thought, too, was is it really is not just these things being in these C zones is that do we really need to go through and say, I don't know, we barely use C one. It's either C two or C three. So why do we even bother with some of the differences because they've become so similar?
Yeah.
That it may be that it's more holistic need and can't, I mean, could we literally make gas stations be their own, just hypothetically? That it may be that it's more holistic need and can't, I mean, could we literally make gas stations be their own, just hypothetically? Their own zone?
You you could. You could remove them from all hypothetically, you could take gas stations as a land use, remove them from all zones as an allowed land use. And then say, the gas station overlay has to be applied to the, you can make an overlay zone for gas stations alone and say, you don't get to put a gas station anywhere unless you get approved for the overlay gas station zone over that existing zoning. So they have to come in when they want a gas station and say, I really, 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 really want a gas station. And here's why it's good on this corner. And they do the overlay and do it. That's, yeah, hypothetically, you could do that. That's one way. You could actually have four or five uses like that. Say, if you want to do one of these, show us why you should get to do that there.
Yeah, hotels and malls too.
Car washes.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, what what's the list? Hotels, car washes, gas stations?
Need to treat car washes like tattoo parlors.
Yeah, I mean. That and the massage places.
We we have limited tattoo parlors, but not.
But not car washes. But I think it goes back to what I think there's some bigger discussion here. And I think this came out of a lot of what we talked about last year, at least for me, please guys jump in. Which is that I think the more I look at these and the more things that come before us and they're like, well, we want like even tonight, we want to rezone to C2. Well, but a C2 isn't just going to give you what it want. It also has this whole long list of other things.
Sure.
And I know that styminess on previous things where we've been like, I don't know if I really want you to be able to do. I don't know what legal services was the first one that landed I landed on, but like within a zone next to residential. And that's where we have some really uniqueness. Unique issues here in Orem circumstances, situation is that we pretty much everything about residential. And we need to kind of look at it again and say, okay, what really makes sense, Gary?
No, that's that's a good point because in the example you were using, legal services not being near residential, it's probably a good idea to keep children away from attorneys.
We are sharks.
You you know, but but as you look at things like that, so not every use in every zone makes sense in the context of what a broad a zone broadly covers. And so there may be things like, do we really want this near something? And so the gas station issue really is kind of an excuse to get us to revisit our C2 and C3 zones. Because they've almost seemed over time to merge and how it's kind of hard for me to figure out the difference between them anymore and why.
So that's that's a that's a great. That's a great segue into that. The 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 issues are economic, but they're also buffering for residential. And that is the issue. That's what has to be looked at, I think, as and as we look at C2 and C3 then is is the issue that it's a gas station or that it's legal services full of people you don't want your children associating with? Et cetera. Or is the issue that it that those things are harder to buffer than just, you know, a dress shop or whatever. A dress shop doesn't generate the trash in the in the garbage cans outside, the noise late at night, et cetera. So it buffers just fine with what we've already included a solid masonry fence or whatever. Do we need to is what you really need extra buffering? Rules or something? We don't know, but we could look at all this and say, maybe this makes sense, maybe. Or maybe some of those things just need to be taken from those zones because too much of their too much of that zone's area is a budding residential. It's it's just too hard to buffer some of those uses. That could be the case. Does that make sense? And then two, we could, we could do it as some kind of an overlay or we could create another zone. That's possible too. We'd have to bring forward ideas about what those things would look like and which stuff works the best. But is that something you want to delve into even? Or are we barking up a wrong tree here?
Yeah. Jim, interested?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jim's into it, I can tell.
Yeah, I'm really into it.
Yeah, I I think it is something that we do have, and I think it's also part of our general plan discussion too. Because I think some of this plays into economics. I think some of this plays into what are we trying to attract to Orem? What businesses?
Yeah.
We've been the retail center of Utah County. Maybe we need to look at what we need to do to be the high end retail center of Utah County.
And your commercial land use element can address some of that stuff and and inform what we would do with C2 and C3. Yeah, absolutely.
So I think they do interplay really well together.
Okay. All right. Well, that was that was easier than I thought.
Okay.
We'll we'll start looking into those more comprehensively than just the corners then. That makes sense, Gary? Does that work for? Okay. We'll do that.
Okay. We have about five minutes if we want to go back to anything about the general plan. I do have one question that I didn't get, which is, is there any way we can get copies in a usable size?
Oh, like.
Of the land use and the Orem zoning map?
Yeah, we we can do that. We should have. We should have. We can do 11 by 17s for you. Pretty easy. That work?
That would be fine. Just.
We'll get those for you to supplement those.
And then, yeah, as long as we have the link, then we can cross reference. But I know sometimes, like, again, for me, paper sometimes to see it visually, the whole.
Yep. I I have to have paper and writing so I can focus and concentrate. If I'm not doodling, I'm not listening. So.
I think you're in more company than you think with today's short form media.
Yep. So that that works. We'll get 11 by 17s for you for the probably just for the next meeting, if that's all right.
That's fine.
We can do that for sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll email out copies of this too. So you have it on your computers as you want to look at it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Then we will adjourn our work session and wait for our regular meeting at 5:30. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the planning commission to order at 5:30 on February 19th, 2025 in the Orem City Council chambers. And we will begin with an invocation by Jerry.
Our Father in heaven, we thank thee this day for thy many blessings. We thank thee for the freedoms we enjoy in this country and in our state and our city. We're grateful for the privilege of living here. We pray that thou will bless us as we deliberate this day the questions before us, the things we will discuss. We pray that we might do it in a several manner. That we might be guided to do that, which will maintain the freedoms, the safety, the lifestyle we have here in our city. And we pray for that guidance in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Okay. We will begin with item 3.1, which is our consent agenda. And the only thing on our consent agenda is a review and approve the minutes from January 15th, 2025. I don't think anyone wants anything removed from our, unless somebody has an issue with the meeting minutes. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'd motion to approve the consent items or the content agenda.
Second?
I second that motion.
Rod's getting it this time. So Bridgette, Moon and Rod seconded that we approve the consent agenda items. Rod?
Yeah, hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
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 Okay. The consent agenda is approved. Then we will move on to item 4.1, which is a continuation of a public hearing from January. So the Ken Garf rezoning the property located generally at 134 East, 1200 South and 110 East and 1200 South from single family residential R8 to commit commercial C2. Jared?
Thank you. As you said, this is continued from our January 15th meeting. I just wanted to point out a couple of things real quickly for the for the folks that are here and for the record, and then you can you can take this under consideration. This is, as you said, the rezone request from 110 and 134 East on 1200 South to the C2 zone. Those are the two properties. As you can see, one has a home still on it. The other is vacant. And this is the Ken Garf Honda property to the to the south. They would like to take those properties and rezone them. That's the larger picture. So you can kind of see where it fits in. You've got the residential across the street and and to the west. But then the car lots here, the zoning on the property currently is R8. It is surrounded by this PD 17 and PD 12 zoning and then the C2 here to the east. They would like to expand that zoning, the C2 zoning to those two properties and bring them into the Ken Garf larger development. The purpose for that would be to provide parking for inventory and for employees. Their current concept includes an access out to 1200 South. In in response to the planning commission's hearing last time around, Ken Garf redid the site plan. We've included this newer site plan that they've submitted. The difference, excuse me, I've got a frog in my throat tonight. The difference in this case is item seven here labeled seven, that is a gate that would control access to the to the parking lot area that they would like to expand. Aside from that, they are still requesting the C2 zone. And to add these stalls, I believe it's 79 stalls that they would add to this with this plan, if the property. If the properties are rezoned and allowed to, to be converted. Landscaping and things like that are all in conformance. The, the Planning Commission can take different actions. We've included those here. You can approve, deny, or continue, or you, sorry, you can recommend approval or denial. I'm trying to give you powers that you don't have. Sorry, it's all written out there for me and I can't even read it to you properly. Sorry. You are the recommending body in this case because it is a zone change. Those are your options. And with that, I'll turn it back to the commission if you have any questions for us as staff.
Okay, any questions from the commission?
I don't think it's really clear.
I have two. Can we go back to Matt? Number one, this is a site plan, correct?
Yes.
And we are not considering the site plan as part of the rezon. It is only a rezon.
That's right. With the, with the requested zone of C2, that doesn't have a site plan attached to it that's part of your approval. This is, this was provided as a concept plan to show what they were gonna do or what they intend to do with the property. The C2 zone though is what's being requested. Site planning is a separate application. They would make that application that would come before you as well for your review.
But being clear about that, that we are talking about the zoning change, not exactly this site plan.
This is illustrative really for that.
And the second part, and I've been trying to figure out how to phrase this question. So this is going to become part of what's continuous to the PD zone, the PD5 zone.
It is, yeah.
Is this land gonna be part of that? Is it gonna be kept separate? How does it, how do we deal with the fact that there might be two different zonings for the, basically the same property? And are they ever gonna combine them into one lot?
Those are questions I can't really answer.
Okay.
If we go back, I'm just gonna go back to this map for a second to show. So yeah, they would be expanding this C2 zone here instead. These two parcels might be combined with a lot combination or a plat amendment of some kind. The question would be a site planning question for planning staff and engineering staff and everyone and the city surveyor as to whether or not they have to be combined to the other larger parcel or not. They don't necessarily have to be and they can be in the two different zones. There is some precedent for their, for properties to be in two different zones in Orem.
So that was kind of what I was trying to ask. So we do have places that are zoned half and half?
There are places like that, yeah. And then the larger, yeah, there are places like that.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily advisable, but there are places like that.
It has happened before. Okay, okay. Those are my questions. Rod?
I wonder if you have any details or if we can ask about the access gate.
The app, we can call the applicant up. I was, we're just doing specific questions if we have any for staff, like business type issues.
Yeah, the only detail I have is where it is. I don't know any else about it. It's a two, two-part gate.
Yeah.
So the question I would have, why would, why aren't we going for a C2 versus a expanded PD to match the other property?
And I, I can't really answer that one either. That was kind of the, the, the sum up of the last public hearing was you can either, paraphrasing the, the Planning Commission's decision at the end. You can go back and decide how serious you are about this C2, how much you really need this and the access, or come back instead with a PD zone that, that we're more comfortable with on its face. Is that fair as a sum up? So what they've, what they've come back with, they elected to add the gate and, and come back with the C2. So that's what we presented.
And we can ask further questions of the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for city staff or should we?
Do we have in our handbooks the definitions of the PD-17 and PD5s?
It's a PD5 and no, you probably have to go online because it's specific. I did look it up. The PD5 basically was designed to be a, and you can correct me, but it's basically designed to be a buffer to the homes to the north and the, and the senior area. And so it has specific rules around it, but it also specifically says they can't have an access, access to 12th North.
I saw.
12th South, sorry, I apologize. 12th South and, but that is something that we could also recommend a change for, correct? That if we, I'm just saying hypothetically.
Yeah, that would be a different thing. You would be amending that PD zone as it exists to say, we're going to allow it access.
So the PD zone could be, and they would have a different set of rules. And they actually, and also PD5, when I looked at it, had a smaller subset of businesses that could be on it. It was like six or eight. It was a handful.
Were there utility or power restrictions for those different PDs or zones?
One more time, sorry.
Are there utility or power restriction, uses, restrictions on different zones?
Not that I've heard, no.
No. Okay. Okay, then if the applicant would like to come forward? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Chris Bick. I'm the civil engineer for this project. To, I can answer a few of your questions, I guess, just to, the, the main reason we are going for the C2 is because of the access. The access is, is crucial to how this parking will, will help with, with the development. If, if you could go to kind of the aerial view, the overall view, if you look at it, currently, when they're offloading vehicles, they either have to go on 1200 offload and come drive around to the access on 200 East and then try to weave their way through the Honda dealership, back into the back of the Volkswagen dealership. And then if they got that parking lot, then they'd have to go up into that parking lot. So that's a pretty long haul, which means your hauler is gonna be on that road for a longer time. The other spot where they park is on 200 East in the center lane there. And then same thing, have to come in through that access on the side, weave their way through a very, very congested dealership on that backside there and go back up into the parking lot on the side. That, that leaves the hauler on the road for a much longer time. It congests traffic, causes problems with internally with the going across the Honda dealership to get to the Volkswagen dealership. I mean, if you were a Chick-fil-A next to McDonald's, you wouldn't want customers driving through your lot to get to the other one, right? They, they function very, very separately that way. You're not dropping off cars from, from the Honda dealership into the Volkswagen or vice versa. And so that's the only reason they want the C2 is for that access.
They couldn't have the access otherwise.
Yeah, with the PD5, we were not allowed in access.
Yeah, without amending the PD5.
Without amending it, yeah. And so when we first approached this, we, we said, hey, we could either do a C2 or we could do a PD5 if, if an access was allowed. And so this was kind of the recommended approach. We, you know, I know, I, I think you had brought up some concerns about, well, any use could come in here in a C2. You know, this dealership's been here since late 80s, early 90s, as far back as you can go on Google Earth. And it's still here today. In 2007, that's when the turn lane was added on 200 East. And it kind of reduced some of that area on, on the shoulder there where the dealership could use. And then in 2016 on University, it took out the shoulder on that side so that they couldn't park any haulers on, on that shoulder anymore and go straight into their, their facility. And so both of those have been additional constraints that have added over time. And so hoping that this access would help alleviate that and allow this, this facility to function a lot more efficiently, to reduce the time that those haulers are on the road and be able to get, get in, get out. You know, the, the city doesn't want those on there as long as, you know, they want them on there as short as possible. Residents want them on as short as possible. Ken Garf wants them on there as short as possible. This is one where they could park on the shoulder, back up, pull right into the lot, park it, be on their way. And so that's, that's the main reason for that one. Let's see, was there, oh, as far as the gate, we figured we could get more into the details of that once we get into the site plan, but we do wanna show that, you know, the, the only purpose for that is for the hauler, you know, to get the cars off, be able to bring cars in, get the hauler on its way so that he can, can move on. And that can be discussed more in detail on the, on the site plan portion, which we'll, we'll have coming up as soon as we're, as soon as we're allowed to get that one through as well. We've actually gone through a couple of reviews cycles with the city to review the site plan. So we're pretty set on what we'd like to do. But obviously, if there's something that we need to adjust or change that helps make it mutually beneficial, that we're definitely open to, to doing that. We wanna work with the city for a solution that works better for everybody. But currently, the constraints on the dealership's making it a lot harder for it to, to function and, and to be able to, you know, be a successful business. And, you know, the more the business is successful, the more revenue it brings in, the more that money can be used for additional projects throughout the city as well. So I, we definitely want to be able to serve, you know, serve the, the Ken Garf clients, but also to help out with, with the city and the residents. One of the reasons to drive is actually over to the east a little bit more is because the neighbor to the west, at the, at the neighborhood meeting suggested, you know, asked if, if we could push it a little bit to the east so that it's not right next to his property. And we said, yeah, that wouldn't be a problem for us as long as the city's okay with it. We shifted it over. You know, there was comments at the neighborhood meeting about lighting and buffering and that kind of stuff. We've, we've got the buffers in there. Lighting's gonna meet codes so that it's not shedding over the property onto the residential. Overall, I think having that access will add a lot more to the safety on the street. Less time, less trip, trip distance for, for cars coming off of those haulers. Less, less cars going through the facilities where, where people are working, where people are moving other cars. It just, it just makes it so it's a lot quicker to get things in and out and in a safer manner. But I think ultimately it makes sense. But here to answer any additional questions as well.
These are just a follow-up to a couple of the issues that were brought up during the last meeting. I think both from residents and in the discussion, which is there was also a concern over employee parking and then employees were parking out and would this gate allow employees to come in and out? Or is it really going to exclusively be for the trucks dropping off the new cars?
Yeah, my understand, my understanding is that it was only for the use for the haulers. No, but I don't, I don't know if there's any additional. Maybe Carlos can help with that.
Carlos Iglesias, no, we are planning for our employees to go in and, in and out. So because the congestion is there's nowhere to go. They're into the neighborhoods, parking in the neighborhoods, fighting for spots. So that would be, that would be key for us, so.
And then it wouldn't be for test driving either?
No.
No, just purely for employees, purely for haulers?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
So a lot of the additional parking spots would be for your own employees as well as unloading the trucks. So the, currently, the trucks are unloaded on 2nd East, 200 East. And the time that it takes to unload a truck is approximately, how long would you guess? I understand that some of the, the trucks have 12 vehicles. Those are the largest ones.
And. Yeah, it just depends on the size. If it's an SUV or sedans, it could be 45 minutes, it could be an hour and 20 minutes. And it just, it just depends on, it also depends on the traffic at the time, what, what's going on there. But the hope is that if they cannot park on 200 East, because right now that's what we've kind of requested them to try to do, and I think the residents have seen that.
Yeah, I've seen that too.
If they, if they can't park there, then they've gotta park on 1200. Well, if they park on 1200 now, instead of having to go try to find a way, they can just back it in, back the car right in through that spot and it's, and it's, and it's pretty quick.
So, I mean, you wouldn't know, but would you estimate that the trucks could be unloaded twice as fast?
I don't know if it'd be twice as fast, but it'd be faster.
But it would be faster.
Yeah, it would be definitely faster.
And 12th South is far busier than 200 East? Or is it not? I don't know.
That would be a question for the residents. I, it's pretty busy. It, it, 1200 gets pretty busy, but 200, 200 East is, is extremely busy.
Yeah.
Just because you got the, you got the dealership, but then you have all the businesses, you know, with J-dogs and everything that goes on that side, Best Buy, the restaurants. So that gets pretty congested. So they get a little nervous when they park there because they've gotta make that turn and try to make sure that the back of their, that trailer, that truck is not impeding into 1200, but it's also not blocking the driveway for J-dogs and that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I wonder. No, not that's gonna pertain to the actual zoning.
Okay. And we can talk about it a little more. It's fine. So thank you. If we have any additional questions, we will.
Okay.
We will ask. How many people are here for this item this evening? How many would like to speak? We have technically had, just by way of explanation, we've technically had the hearing, but we can reopen it if the Planning Commission agrees. Are it, are we in favor of letting?
Sure.
True. Okay, always. Okay. Then I'm gonna go ahead and reopen the public hearing for those who'd like to come forward. We'll still limit to three minutes. And please state your name at the beginning.
Hi, my name is Lucy Ramirez. I live directly across the street at 137 East, 1200 South. And at the risk of being repetitive, I've gone over the stats and on the traffic issue. I believe it was Councilman Erickson who said that there were two issues at hand here last time, but I believe those two issues are tied to one another. We took pictures of the times over the last month that they have had these trucks on 1200 South. They unload them on the other side of my friend's home and they, they do it within 45 minutes to an hour and a half in contr, in contradiction to what the applicant said last month and said was 15 minutes. It's been, I think, four different times that they've had them on 1200 South. I wanted to say that I realize that this business is integral as part of the community, but it's also allowing an opening there. Me, they already have an opening that they're unloading trucks to on 1200 South. It's, there's a fence there. But to do this is just like a, is a concession to the business at the cost of the residents. They initially proposed this as a PD5 where there would be no entrance and they heard everybody's comments and nobody, no one said, yeah, we agree. And they said, well, if we, we don't do a gate there, would you have a problem with the parking lot? Well, no, I don't want the parking lot across from my house because I know that's gonna inevitably affect the value of my home. Who's gonna wanna buy a house that lives across, that's right across the street from a commercial area? There's also buses that pick up children there. From talking to the school district, it's much more difficult to change those paths because they go into a deep, a deep dive with the city as to what their routes are. So I think that would further, then complicate the, the existing issue of traffic. I don't think you can extricate one from the other. The needs of the dealership should not be conceded by the residents. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Stuart Merrill and I'll try and be less emotional this time. This has been a really hot issue for the residents or the, the people that live in this area. The 45 years my family's lived there, our neighborhood has been cannibalized by University Parkway. They've been coming closer and closer to us and now it's right in front of our face. I would, I would dare, dare say that the engineer and the Ken Garf people are giving you half-truths. They do not need that entrance. They do not need it at all. I have video of their trucks parked on 1200 South, whether it's facing east or facing west. The trucks, the cars come off and they pull right into that driveway that they have already on 1200 South next to our neighbor's house right there. They don't drive around the block like they, they say they do. They do not do that. In, in the videos I have, they pull off when it was parked towards the west, they pulled the car off, came around the truck and went right into that driveway. When it was parked towards the east, they backed off and pulled right in. There was no driving around the block at all. You do not need another entrance into 1200 South. They have one. And if they wanna park their trucks in front of my house. And if they want to park their trucks in front of my house for an hour, that's fine. They can park it there and drive it into that driveway right there on 1200 South. They have an entrance on 1200 South. They have an entrance on 200 East. They have an entrance on University Parkway and they have an entrance on Main Street. They do not need another entrance. They, the 1200 South seems to be working fine according to the pictures we have and the video we've taken. So why do they need another one? They don't. The, um, neighborhood on the west side of 1200 South, they got the benefit of a nice wall, continuous unbroken wall with grass and trees. That's what we want. We don't want them in our face. We don't want Kengarv in our face with their parking lot. We would like to have some semblance of a neighborhood still. Please do not give them this entrance. They do not need it. And please do not make it commercial because what's to say they go out of business in five years or they decide to move or change locations? Then the next thing's going to be popping up there is a McDonald's and an Arby's and whatever. Because it's going to be C2. Please put a wall there. Separate us from them. They do not need another entrance. They have one, which they are using just fine. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my, hi, my name is Isaac Aragon. I live just north of the
Right of.
Kengarv as well. I find it interesting that we're timed, but they had all the time that they wanted. And that's kind of reflective of our issue. Where the public is not being considered, they are. And to me, I find it that by giving them more privilege is an encroachment of our way of life as the residents. We want this to be a residential zone. We care for our community. And the access points are just another way for them to say they didn't want more land, which is what they've already had been planned with the people that they purchased the land from. It was already set for them to have this. And for us as the residents, we're going to have to pay the consequences for them. So I just want to reiterate the same point that we should be considered, the residents. And I've talked to many people in our neighborhood that all agree that they do not want this. There's, uh, an apartment right next to our neighbor. And there is only one way in and one way out. And all these sort of apartments have about a good 800 people, I would just guess. They are also going to face the same issue. So it's not just Kengarv. It is this entire neighborhood. They've had these trucks parked like, uh, Stuart was saying, both ways. And then many times right in front of our house. Just right there, a huge big truck hauling out our cars. And I walk along, uh, Main Street to go to school. And that access point there is well more than big enough to, for them to come in and out. Maybe if Kengarv managed and organized their parking spaces more correctly and more, and more amicably to the community, maybe they wouldn't be having this issue to deal with. So that is all I would like to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? Okay, thank you. Then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. Planning commissioners, anything, comments, thoughts, discussion?
Well, a question I guess that I would have is, uh, you're, you're seeking, you really have two desires and that is, uh, additional parking would be one. You're restricted in your, uh, available parking spaces and as you suggest, the employees of which there are many are parking really in the neighborhoods surrounding this area, some would be at least. So I've, I've gone over and, uh, and, uh, looked at this reasonably closely to get a feel for what's going on there. And, uh, so the parking is, is probably as important as any element for the desire to change this, I'm thinking. It's not just the access. Now, you, uh, it was referenced in a, a public comment that there already is a gate on the back of that property, which I, I did not see. Is that indeed a fact? Is there a a place where people are able to?
So there is a, there is a gate behind the Honda dealership to the east of that residential home right there. There's a pretty narrow one right there.
Okay.
But in order to, like, if a hauler dropped a car off that way, you have to loop around the residential home down through the dealership of both Honda and Volkswagen and then come back up. So your path of travel is significantly longer.
Well, I, I, uh, went in there to park my vehicles to just, uh, inspect things. And it, uh, it would be a pretty, uh, challenging thing to, uh, drive from 200 East behind the Volkswagen dealership. I'm telling you, if you have.
Yeah.
It, it's like a maze that you would be having to drive through. I don't know, uh, if there's already gate on the back right now, access, uh, would that gate still be used on the back or would that, could that, that just be shut off? Is it necessary to have both of them? Do you see what I'm asking? Not that it's good or bad. I'm just curious.
Yeah. So the, the Volkswagen dealership is on the west side.
Right.
And so any cars that need to get into the Volkswagen side, would, would use the gate on the access on the west side because that would be directly into the Volkswagen lot, which would be a really short path. So that would allow the hauler to drop cars off.
Yeah.
Really quickly there. I, I've driven through that other gate on the north side and went around to the north. And it, it's congested. It's tight. It's hard to get through. It, I, anybody who says it's not, go drive it. I promise you it is. Cause it, it's, it's a much longer, I mean, if you just look at it, you draw a line down from there over to the west and up to the other lot versus just
You see that.
tiny notch from the north. Path of travel is going to be, um, you know, the longer your path of travel, the longer the time the hauler's there. So if we shorten that, the hauler's there less time, that, that reduces the amount of time that it's out there. If they're saying the hauler's already there, let's reduce the time that it's, that it's sitting there.
Are you doing a, are you going to do a, a wall? I understand there's the, the gate that's in the plan. Are you going to do a big wall that kind of blocks some of the sound and some of that light?
Um, I know on the, on the residential sides, we've, we've got a wall that's there. And so we're going to maintain that one. And then we've got landscaping requirements for the north side. We put in a pretty big landscape buffer. We don't show our landscape plan on here, but there are tree requirements that would put in some, some stuff in there as well. And that's something that, you know, we're open to discussing on the site plan as well. You know, we want, we want to work with the city and with the residents to do something that's you know, agreeable to all, but primarily we, we would need that access to be able to not have your cars driving through the Honda dealership weaving its way all the way back up into that other parking lot.
So is that a yes or a no on a fence at this time?
Uh, currently we don't show a fence. Um, there wasn't one in the code, but, and we just went with the code um, on the north side along 1200.
Yeah. Because it would be consistent with other C2 zoning. So like anywhere along State Street. So there would be required a fence on there. They would, yeah, they would because there's residents right there, but not here.
Yeah, I think both the C2 and the PD five don't require a fence along that, that line, but.
Another concern I have is this is, this, nothing to do with the zoning, but you know, they say it's partially for inventory, partially for, for employee parking. You know, I, I want to give everyone the benefit of the doubt, but I could totally see, you know, yeah, in five years or so, you know, i- if this firm moves and a different dealership comes in and they just use it all for inventory and then the employees go back to parking in the neighborhoods. All right, then it's, and there's no way for us to enforce that.
Any questions for the applicant? Any additional ones? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously ask if we have one in, in the course of our discussion. So we can discuss, we can make a motion and discuss a motion. That's kind of where we're at at this point.
So I'd like to discuss, please. So first of all, I realize this is a very emotional subject. And, um, the neighbors have some concerns and I, I understand their concerns. But in their statements, I heard a justification of having the ability to back in and unload vehicles. For me, it's a safety issue to be on 12th South or Second East for any period of time. Those roads are becoming more busily used. And I just, you know, with, with the way some people are driving, it can be reckless. I just think it's bad idea to park a truck for any length of time. And to me, this seems like a reasonable attempt to address concerns so they can pull off and unload vehicles and do it in the safety. As I'd mentioned, and it could be, as we talked earlier, it could be discussed in the, you know, the more detailed site plan. I'm interested in how they do this gate. Is it going to be a proximity sensor that only certain people will trigger an opening? If so, that assuages a lot of my concerns. But to me, I don't split hairs over C2. They have a valid business requirement. Their solution provides for a little bit more safety in offloading vehicles. They've been there for 20 years. Yeah, they could pack up in five and go and a lot of things could happen at five. But I don't think we should be personally hung up on alphabets when there, there is a requirement and there is a, a, a safety enhancement by giving the trucks the ability to pull off the road and unload their vehicles and have the employees have a place to park that's not in the neighborhoods. To me, that would be a concern too, because then you're going to have pedestrians crossing the street and probably not using crosswalks and it's another safety concern. So my personal feelings are I, I support their desire to have it rezoned to C2.
Are you making a motion by saying that?
I'm just making my comments. I can make a motion. Okay, I move that we approve their, wherever the verbiage is, their request to change the zoning from R8 to C2.
And I second your motion.
So Rod moves and Jim seconds that we send a positive recommendation. Is that correct, which you're?
Correct.
Positive recommendation to city council regarding the rezoning of the property located generally at 134 East, 1200 South and 100 East and 12th South from single family residential R8 to commercial C2. That's the motion. Okay.
That's what I said, just the abbreviated version.
You've already spoken. You can speak again because you made the motion. Are you good?
I say aye.
Well, we're not voting yet.
Okay.
I'm saying do what, to speak.
Negative.
Okay. Jim, you seconded. Would you like to speak?
Well, I, I just echo what Rod has said that I, it's an unfortunate occurrence, but University Parkway, uh, the widening of that really encroaches Garf's business. And, uh, they're, uh, my experience has been they're, uh, uh, highly honorable, uh, business that, uh, deals in integrity. I've, I've, I've had interactions with a number of them and they've been very honorable, honest and, uh, this, to me, just represents the best solution and I, and I surely sympathize with the neighbors and their concerns, but if there's already a gate on the back, we're just, we're really improving things in my mind. It's not making it worse. And, uh, ideally, if it could have, uh, if the access could have been provided on University Parkway as in the past, that would be great, but it can't be. And, uh, they're a good, uh, what citizen of Orem, the Garf organization is, and so I, I support their desire to make this change.
Are there any other commissioners who'd like, Jerry?
I'd just like to say that I often drive that road. And if my recollection is correct, it goes right into the university mall. There is much traffic comes out of University Place and goes right down 1200 South. And it just keeps getting worse. I cannot support putting, making that C1. It will only get worse.
I, I would agree with Jerry. I, uh, if you'd come with me with a PD five extension with a, with a modification to allow them to get in and out so that we can continue to protect the neighborhood and keep it a residential neighborhood. What you're doing is you're turning it into a commercial corridor. The more and more you let this happen, you're just throwing matches in a fire. You're just making it bigger and bigger. So, I can't see destroying communities. I mean, Rod was right. They made, made a strong argument to let the access happen because that would keep the truck off the road, but that doesn't mean we didn't want to destroy the neighborhood by widening it into a commercial zone. So for that reason, I couldn't support it. If they would have came with a PD five and a modification, I, I could have got behind that.
What, could you clarify again what that modification would look like?
Well, since it's a planned development, we can have lots of restrictions about what it is. We could have had, made sure that they gated, put up a large wall down 12th South, preventing noise and obstructions from the business. So we could have put a lot of constraints around what happens. You open to C2 and they could even put the storefront on the other side if they want. So.
Yeah, I think that's my sentiment. Um, I, I, I was hesitant about the, the C2 option for what the gentleman said about, you know, five, 10, 15 years from now, then you get an Arby's in there, McDonald's in there. Yeah, I agree with the sentiment that I don't like the idea of encroaching that much. I've been, I've made my opinions very clear several times as I like neighborhoods to be neighborhoods. I like city to be city. These gray areas are really tough. I, I echo Rod's sentiments that, you know, I, I, I too, uh, went by, uh, yesterday to review, you know, to, to have my eyes on the street, look at it myself. And I do see a room for improvement for a lot of lighting and, and crosswalks for that street to increase the safety of, of the local traffic and the pedestrians. And in my due diligence, to determine that there are projects in progress to add sidewalks and lighting to that street. I, I don't go that down the street very often, but I could understand how there's going to be increased traffic, especially during the rush hour times when university is a parking lot, which I have experienced several times. I agree with Rod. I think that there, that something like this would increase the safety of that road because it decreases the amount of time that the, um, that the, the trucks are going to be on the streets. And I also hear Mike's concern that it's frustrating the street, the trucks have to be there. So I think, uh, I think I agree with, with Mike. I think, I think an amendment would be more appropriate.
And that's where it is hard and difficult for me as well because I am empathetic to the citizens. I am really concerned about buffering and the expansion. Even listen to our pre-meeting, that's something that I think as we work on the general plan has to be discussed as, is the encroachment of, um, businesses further into our neighborhoods. But equally, Kengarv is property owner. They have property rights as well. They have a legitimate business need and this is their property and they're coming to us to ask for it. And, and my biggest concern other than encroaching on the neighborhood and being a C2 is that the site plan doesn't tie them to anything. And one other option that I would put forth is that we have a development agreement, at least at the very minimum. I would like to see a development agreement that says that this is what they are going to do. I think in good faith, they want to. I think that that's what the intention is. What does the commission feel about a development agreement?
I, I think that's a great idea. I personally would support C2 with a development agreement. I don't think personally we want to, my personal opinion is we don't want to make things overly complicated. I don't think personally we want to, my personal opinion is we don't want to make things overly complicated with restrictions. And with the zoning, you know, PD five changed it, have an entrance, whatever. I think we can accomplish the same thing by doing C two with an appropriate development agreement.
Why would you point out that their business is the PD five? That's why it exists. And so we would just be expanding it into their business.
No, I'm tracking.
So.
Yeah, but as far as.
Which gives you your development agreement because it's part of the planned development.
Right, but they have chosen to come to us with a C two. So that I'm just putting that forth that I, I would prefer a development agreement on this particular one.
Well, that doesn't prevent the Arby's and the McDonald's 15 years from now, though.
Sure.
No, what did you say?
He doesn't, he doesn't prevent the development of Arby's, but if it's, if it's planned development, the restriction, just the one it can be used.
PD does.
I want to go really clear. I have nothing against Arby's or McDonald's.
Well. Arby's.
Oh, Gary, it looked like you were going to say something, but you're not, so. So I mean, that is one option, but I mean.
So do we need revise a motion?
Since you made the motion, you can choose to amend the motion that it would be, we make the recommendation that it's a C two contingent upon a development agreement.
Let me, let me ask you a question before you do that. So should it be a PD five or whatever? They can still have the gate on the, the access on the backside.
The PD five would also have to be amended.
Okay, I asked the question why they didn't go for that in the first place. And I thought it had to do with the inability to have access from the 1200 South. Is that correct?
Well, they would require an amendment to the PD five zone in order to have.
But it could be done.
Yes.
PD five as it stands, as it's written right now, does not allow access under 1200 South. So they would need to amend the PD five zone and ask for that zone.
But that could be done. That request could be made.
You could make that request. Yeah.
So is that that particular zone or are we saying we modify PD five? So anywhere there's a PD five, they can have access without modifications?
If, if it was, if it were to be a PD five zone request with an amendment to that zone, that's a different request. It would have to go.
They'd have to come back through.
Come back with an amendment to.
No, I'm tracking that.
Yeah.
But would the change in the PD five apply to that site only? Or would be blanket to all PD fives that are in the city today?
If you were amending the PD five zone, then it would apply to all the PD five zones that there, it's only in this one area, but.
That, that those two dealerships, the west and the.
So I just want to clarify that. So we would be looking at making that change for the entire city and saying you can have an entrance.
That's, that's right. Because I would understand that.
On to 12th.
On to 12th South. But you can also amend it that there's only one access on the PD five onto 12th.
Yes.
So they cannot have more than one.
See, and I think we're splitting hairs. That's, that's my point.
That's our job.
Yeah.
So I, and I think we don't want to be in the business of splitting hairs every single time.
No.
I go back and I would like to amend my motion that we approve the CD two with the appropriate developer's agreement that will tie them, this ownership, to what they're committing to do.
Are you okay with that? Jim has to second it, right? Yeah, Jim.
I second Rod's revised proposed.
So then, right now, Rod proposed and Jim seconded that we provide a positive recommendation contingent upon a development agreement to redevelop the property from R eight to C two. Do I need to be more specific or is that?
I would, I would be specific of what you mean by the development agreement.
Okay. By what is in the development agreement? That the development agreement is consistent with the site plan that they've been developing? Is that what you?
Permeates to the gate. And how the gate acts, whether it's a proximity sensor, that it is really truly only for the purposes they've stated. To get the truck off 12th South and any employees it might park and nobody else can access it.
I don't think the gate's going to get the truck off of 12th South.
No, that's the purpose of what they're designing. So they could back it in and unload.
Is that what the plan is?
No.
No, it was, it's, they're just going to be able to continue to park it on 12th South. So it's just faster access from the street to the parking lot for unloading and then for employees. Hopefully only employees keeping the truck on the street just for a shorter period of time.
You, you can tell that by the design. There's.
There's no way.
Yeah, there's no room for a hauler to.
Right, unless backing out would, would block all of 12th South in that transition.
We would block it backing in. I'm not sure I agree, but I, I'm not sure I agree, being the son of a truck driver, that they can't back a hauler in there.
Sure.
My grandpa got into really tight spaces with his.
Well, I'm just saying, but I, I don't know that I agree with you that that's not possible.
I, I agree that it's, that it's possible. I just think that it would disrupt traffic more. Does that, would you agree with that, that it would disrupt traffic more if it's going in and out?
For a few minutes it would.
Sure. Okay. I, I think that's agreeable.
Would anyone else like to make any comments about the motion?
Do I misunderstand that they're also able to load off of 200 East? And they're doing it?
They're doing that now.
Yes, they are.
That's what they've been doing. Yeah.
And that is totally in a commercial zone.
Well, it's in the middle of the street.
But it's still in between commercial zone. Which keeps it off the residential street.
Agreed.
Okay.
We, we have three major roads that are commercial surrounding the business already. And yet we want to take the one residential road and commercialize it.
Okay. Are we ready to go to vote or any further discussion? I can see people thinking, so. Okay.
I'm ready to vote.
Rod?
Aye.
Jerry?
Nay.
Mike?
Nay.
Aye, Jim.
Burton?
We can do contingencies, yes.
You've already started the vote and so you need to vote.
I gotta say nay.
And I'm going to explain my vote before I give my vote. Because I'm going to vote for it, which puts us three to three, which means we will make no recommendation to the city council. So it will be clear to the city council that we are divided on this issue. And this, so I vote for it. So it should be three, three. And so the motion passes as a neg, as no recommendation. And I want to explain that a little bit because our purpose here is to study this and to give a recommendation only to the city council. The city council makes the final determination on this. And they will hear this in a few weeks' time. Is it scheduled yet?
Uh, I believe it's the first meeting in March.
First meeting in March? Okay, that's like the 19th. I think it's a little late in the month. So whatever the first meeting in March is for the city council. We invite you to come again. We invite you to come to that meeting and talk to, talk to them and share what you've shared with us. And they make the final determination. By giving them a no recommendation, it does speak that we are very mixed on this whole situation. And I guess that's it for that item. So thank you very much. We'll move on to item four point two, which is a public hearing on a text amendment. Staff's proposal to amend article 22 dash 14 dash 20 dash I and 22 dash one dash five dash, uh, sec, five G. By changing the following neighborhood meeting requirements, notice, distance and deadlines, permissible meeting dates and criteria for renoticing and supplemental meetings. Ooh, Michael's ready.
Okay. Thank you. As you said, this is a proposed text amendment regarding neighborhood meetings and how those are noticed principally. I, I wanted to go through just the quickly, you have the red lines in your, your staff reports. I wanted to just rush through those a bit and, and then you can ask any questions you might have. And we can talk about it some more and see if this is something you're interested in, in passing on to the city council in some form or another. The first change that is proposed deals with scheduling that neighborhood meeting. I guess I should start at the beginning. As a background, development proposals are most of the time required to go through neighborhood meetings before they're brought before the, the planning commission. They, they, there are rules about how you do that, how you notice it, where you conduct it, when you conduct it, et cetera. And so these are regarding those rules. It already states in the ordinance that those meetings need to be scheduled on weeknights after six or on Saturdays after nine, all in an attempt to make sure that the most people are able to meet, to, to come to those meetings and attend them. Not on holidays or on the day after a holiday. And we would propose adding that they would not be conducted on the same night as a city council or planning commission meeting. Making sure that people that are attending those meetings aren't excluded from their ability to be at both things. Does that make sense? Okay. The next part of it would be the notice related to the notice of the meeting itself. Right now, the ordinance calls for those notices to be posted or distributed at least one week in advance. The proposal is to say it two weeks in advance to give people more time. This is all based on some feedback that we've received. Two weeks would be not too far in advance that people forget about it, but far enough in advance that more people could plan to attend. And then notice to the property owners right now is, is required. Notice to property owners within 1,000 feet if the proposal or the change that's being proposed would involve multifamily housing. But 500 feet for everything else. The proposal is to change that notice to just be within 1,000 feet regardless of whether there's multifamily involved or not. The last parts are just two miscellaneous changes. The proposal should be briefly described in the notice and also described in the meeting. I, I'm surprised that that needs to be explicitly said, but apparently that's the case. So. But that's also feeding into the next part of this, which is that another neighborhood meeting may be required if there are changes made to that proposal. Or if the concept was presented, for example, just to, to gain input from the neighborhood. That doesn't get, if you, if you conduct a, a fact finding mission, a mood gathering meeting, that doesn't get to count as your required neighborhood meeting. You, you put forth a proposal based on that maybe, and you come back again and do another neighborhood meeting. We just wanted to make that stuff clear in the ordinance itself. So people that developers, that applicants understand why we're saying in some instances, no, you have to go back and do another neighborhood meeting. Because that first meeting doesn't really qualify for what you, what you were required to do. Does that make sense? And that, that, that proposal gets described in some, at least in some fashion in the notice itself. So people can decide if they're concerned or not. And those are really the only changes that we're talking about making to the neighborhood notices. This is, this again would be, this is a text amendment. So staff filed the application ourselves, but it would still fall under the same rules. You would need to make a recommendation to the council to approve or deny. Or if you want to make some changes to it, you could do that as well. If you want us to look at other stuff instead. We're happy to do that. We just wanted to bring it to you as a draft and see what you thought.
Can I ask one question before I turn it over to you? Can you flip back to?
Yeah.
Notice given at least two weeks in advance. By that, do you mean it has to be mailed out two weeks in advance?
Yeah. Currently, it's, it's mailed out at least a week in advance.
Yeah.
Two weeks gives it more likelihood, more likelihood to show up 10 days in advance and be kind of a reasonable.
How many people have had it show up the day of the meeting or after the meeting?
So that's what I'm going to go over.
Go, then go.
So this letter from TriPoint, which says February 4th for a meeting that's held on February 11th, that's seven days. The envelope says they didn't drop it in the post office till the 6th. And it didn't show up to my house until the 18th. So the meeting was over seven days ago by the time I received the letter.
Right.
I think this definitely needs to be changed. It says it must arrive within one, two weeks before.
Yeah, we could, it could say something like that.
I, I don't really care if they have to mail it a month before, but it needs to show up in enough time that people can plan to show up. Not, oh crap, there's a meeting this week. I gotta go, you know?
That's the, the goal, that people get enough time.
And, and this, this is the norm, to be honest. I don't usually get them until like a day or two before.
Part of the difficulty is, it, well, in saying it has to show up. I have no idea or way of knowing when it shows up. And I don't know how we would do that from an ordinance regulatory standpoint. What we could do is it must, put in, it must be postmarked two weeks before. And then when something comes in, it's like, no, this wasn't postmarked. Planning commission could continue that or staff could say, hold it, you haven't met this requirement. You know, but, but to say it has to be a week before the meeting, somebody gets it.
Right.
I don't have any way of knowing that.
The post office is not the most reliable place on the planner.
I'm starting to think you live in a little, I don't know what your postman does with your mail. I really don't.
Well, here's, here's the irony. I have one right next to it that was, is postmarked on the 13th and it came the same day as this one. So.
No, they, they have been very inconsistent and I like the idea of saying that postmark has to be two weeks prior.
What color is the horse that delivers your mail?
It's an old Palomino nag. Palomino nag, right?
Or Newman.
We could add that kind of language, postmark two weeks, at least two weeks prior. Sure.
Because I have my stack of them that I keep. I write when I, they're postmarked. I don't, I should write when I receive them. But like, yeah, you look at the dates and I mean, just, you know, the letter says the 12th, the postmark says the 16th. And the meeting was for the six, for, for the 26th. So you get kind of, they are all over the place.
I mean, you get a postmark, the delivery time anywhere from a week to two weeks on these things. So I'd almost rather see a postmark three weeks so that they have time to plan to be there.
Oh, yeah. No, like.
So you're saying this was delivered the, the day after, that you're going to have to get the mail, which you do once a week, right?
I go out all the time to look for these.
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say.
I'm always looking for these.
Yeah, I agree. I don't wait for mail with bated breath often. Especially, you know, early in, in, in being an adult, right? Like, let's not kid ourselves. Like I live in an age where, where anybody wants to send me a letter can send me an email, right? And so, no, I don't, I don't get my mail, you know, every week, right? So I agree. I think more than a few weeks, I think it's going to be the most reasonable.
We can, we can.
But I love the direction of this. I totally love the direction of this. I just think it should be a little longer so that people have time to plan.
Are you okay with postmark being two weeks before? Because that, that means they, they actually get in the mail. It's like, we've, we've pointed out, we have several examples where they wrote the letter on one day, but they didn't mail it for several days. We also have examples where they literally dropped it in the mail the same day.
This took 12 days to get to my house. So if it's postmarked two weeks before the meeting, I had two days to decide to go. And like I said, this is not that uncommon.
Really?
If, if you pay attention to the stamps, which most people don't, they just see it. And if it falls in the timeline, you go, oh, that's already over or that's tomorrow. You don't look at the, the postage stamp and say, when, when did that count? But it's not that uncommon for it to take over a week. And we saw what happened with the mail-in ballots throughout Utah, taking two and a half weeks to get to the county clerk. And so they didn't get counted. The postal service in the state sucks. It just does suck.
They routed it through Vegas, but yeah. So I don't know if I was supposed to get that.
You haven't gotten it yet.
I haven't received it and I check my mailbox every day.
You haven't got the Tri, just because we're using it as an example. You haven't, that was the most recent one. You haven't gotten the one for TriPoint?
I don't believe so. I haven't seen that.
See, I'm not alone.
We can, we can push the, we can push the time back too, if that's what.
Sounds like they're going to have to.
Yeah.
The best way to track it is when it's postmarked. That's, what else can you do? Two weeks, if that's not enough, what do you suggest?
I just, three weeks. It gives people time to plan. And then if it is delayed, there's still time.
Jerry says three weeks.
I think three weeks. I've received them very late.
I'm okay with three weeks.
I'm okay with three weeks.
Okay, three weeks.
One thing I would like to see on the thousand foot is when we have obstructed areas. One thing I would like to see on the thousand foot is when we have obstructed areas like, say a property around I-15 or something that it's expanded past or that is not counted into calculation. Cause like Wilkerson Farms is a great example, that I-15 cuts out a wide swath of people who are largely affected by that property changing. And so a thousand feet is eaten up by I-15, you know?
On the east side of the property.
Yeah, so a lot of people who are, and more than half the people who are gonna go, they're gonna come up Sand Hill cause it's just easier. And they're going to Walmart or, you know, the mall, so they'll cut up that. But I-15 eats up that complete notification area. So I, you know, when we have obstructive areas, but they're encompassed, I think that, you know, we're gonna figure out some way to.
Yeah.
Now, what, a city street?
I was gonna say, other than I-15, what would you consider obstructive? Cause State Street's 105 or something like that, like feet. What other, what would you consider as obstructive within our city boundaries?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, you've got 800 State Street, University Parkway. Those do impact people, so they are obstructed. How far does the range go? I mean, a lot of those aren't going to be warranted, right? But like Ken Garf, if we were doing something around that, like right on University Parkway, that whole pavilion eats up all the space, but everybody on 1200 South gets affected by it. So, yeah, I just think some of these, it's more of those tight areas, you know?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask for a really technical question. Is it a thousand feet from the property line in all directions?
From the property boundaries, yeah.
The property boundaries, so not any item, not the center of the property, not, it's literally the boundaries straight out.
So like Wilkerson Farms, these have, they even have to go over the railroad tracks that they don't own. And then some additional manufacturing I-15, then it hits Melvilles and you've already eaten up a thousand feet.
You're not making this easy, Mike, you know that.
Well, I, I, I just, I like transparency. I, I do, you know, I mean, if it was cost effective, I'd love to say 5,000 feet. But that's, that's not very practical or, you know?
What would you, what would you write in as the description as to the expectation here? You posed the challenge, now give the solution.
Where warranted, I don't know how wide is.
See, that's big. Everyone can say, well, it's not warranted here because Nelson Grove is.
Well, I mean, I don't know, you're trying to catch me on the spot. You didn't ask me to solve the world problems, you just asked me to criticize them.
But you're creating the world's problems here now, so.
No, if you give Mike five minutes, he will write something very nice. He's really good at that.
We can also go back and, sorry, that's really loud, wow. We can also go back and look at, and try to come up with some kind of language that would.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna fix everything and this is, this is great. I love the improvements, I love the direction. I just think, you know, I've just run into a few of those situations in the past where, you know, these people didn't hear because like, they were just right outside the range, right? Like if you were going to do something at, what's that, Lube Dock by Shopko? But it was this big thing because of Shopko, they're not gonna hit a house. But everybody right there might be really affected by what's going into where Lube Dock was.
But does Lube Dock count as their building? Are they a separate plat within the whole thing or are they?
I was just using it as an example.
No, no, I know, but I'm just, I, I'm teasing out what you're trying to say here. So if they're, if they're part of the same property as Shopko, then it, it should be from the boundary of the whole area.
If they were all the same.
Yeah, but if they're a plat within.
Okay, let's go to Walkers, the old Walkers on State Street and Fourth or Second North.
Which is a separate property within another.
Which is surrounded by a bunch of commercial. And because of all that stuff, you're not actually getting to the homes that may greatly be affected by the change in the development.
I apologize. We are still trying to have our meeting here and I appreciate that you guys need to talk, but could you go out? The acoustics in here, we can hear, it just comes straight back to us. And I don't mind if you talk, but it's just getting hard to hear each other. Thank you.
Anyway, that's my example.
Yeah, no, but there's, and, and it is a, at some point, we can't tease out every single.
Right, and I don't think you should hold this up for a month trying to, I just want us to think about it. There are, there are spots where people aren't being pulled, but it does greatly affect them, the developments that are being made.
And there's also nothing that says we can't come back and revisit this in six months after we see what some of these are. We also can continue today as well.
There are some areas where, you know, you think about it, that project, it's already such a mess, like Sand Hill Road, that anything you do in there, you gotta go 5,000 feet around it because so many people go down that road and through that area that anything that happens on it is almost destructive to the whole area, so.
Yeah, I'd like to motion to continue.
Yeah, well, we, let's finish talking about this. I mean, I guess he'd made a motion technically, but we can keep talking about some of the other issues in here too, because I think there are, I have feelings about some stuff. Would you like to, I guess I should say that, would you like to withdraw your motion to continue?
To continue the conversation, I'll draw my motion, thank you.
Thanks. Anything else specifically about the thousand feet anyone want to say? Okay. I am still very concerned on, well, a couple of aspects of the meetings themselves and what we get back from the, like what we get in the letter itself and also what we get back as commissioners, we get this summary from the, I'm not sure how to deal with this, but we've gotten the full range. We've gotten everything from the neighborhood showed, the neighbor showed up, they liked it, they complained there was no cookies, literally, to detailed, this person asked this question and this was the answer of this person. And it would be nice to have a little more robust. Maybe, is there a way to have like model, this might be the lawyer, but the model like minutes of what we're looking for? Because it is helpful to us to know what questions actually are and what the answers are as opposed to just kind of brief summaries of people showed up.
Who captures that data currently?
The applicant provides it.
That's what I thought. So it's their slant, I guess.
The, the code language, I think, just says detailed minutes. But then, like you said, you get the, you get the full gamut. I'm not sure.
Detailed minutes, sounds good.
Yeah, it, it says detailed minutes right now. We, I suppose we could, well, take a, a set of minutes that we feel like are good and put it through.
Quarter must attend.
And have it randomized that, so it doesn't reference anything real. And then use that as an example for people's, or we could, we could try to come up with some way to, to, to make clear that they need to provide or record the meeting in some way so they can write minutes, because I, yeah.
Unless we had a representative of the community, the city to capture that, it's, it's going to be rather arbitrary and maybe not clearly defining just what did happen, but.
I mean, I think the onus should be on the applicant to provide it, but I think that there's ways that we could maybe help, especially some of our citizens who have to have this to rezone their own property that don't have an idea of what we need or, or what would be helpful, that it might be nice to have something to say, here's an example. Gary?
Perhaps it could be, well, there's two issues. One, the meeting itself and the notice that goes out, and then the report that comes back. Perhaps both could be done on a template provided by the city. So in the neighborhood meeting, it might have location of the property in the notice that you would get, location of the property, property owner, the applicant or agent, the specific proposal of what it is they're requesting to be done. Then on the report back, maybe it's they, they have to return a report on a form provided by the city. And we'll give them a form and it says, meeting was held at, and then they write in the location, you know, how many people were at the meeting? You know, just things that we could think of that might be important for them to fill out. Because a lot of applicants, of all the applicants, I mean, some are very sophisticated and do this very well. Others, this is the first time they've ever done something like this and they have no idea what to do.
But I've also seen developers who come of course repeatedly have vastly different letters and information in the letters.
Yeah, and it might be good to standardize.
Yeah, all we say in the ordinance right now, if I remember correctly, is that it just has to include that paragraph that, you know, our 22 dash whatever, that we have, we have to have this meeting. But we don't really outline what information needs to be in there. I know we're talking about, I think it's the next slide, adding that it needs to have a brief description. Well, what does that mean? The TriPointe Home one we got sent us was literally just the map. It doesn't give any indication of what they're trying to propose to. It doesn't give any indication of what, that was the TriPointe one I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, well, oh, I think TriPointe has some details.
One of them does, I'm sorry if I'm, yeah. Yeah, to my point, it's just the map, the area, and that they're trying to rezone it again.
To R8.
R8.
Which most people don't know what that means.
Yeah. I'm sorry, that, I don't know how far we can require, I don't know what other cities require on their notices. But I just, it's like the yellow card and getting the yellow card and saying, this is coming before you. And for some people, that's the first time they've ever seen it and you can't even tell what the rezone is. Like, I mean, that, when you're making that determination if you need to go or not, or if you're, something's coming to your home and you're feeling uncertain of what this change is going to be, having a little more information or a better way of getting some information can help with some of that unease. And, but I'm, I mean, it's that balance between making it to owners and informing the public.
I, I think for me, just thinking about it as I, as I'm here, the idea of the template does both of those things. It'll, it'll make the meeting more informative and it'll make it easier for developers to know what we want. It's just what we ask for in the template.
They probably wonder themselves, just what am I to provide? Have, have a template would give them that to guide.
Makes it easy.
We could come up with some questions in a template that would help them provide what we need.
And over here.
Oh, sorry, Matt.
I was just thinking generally too, if, if they're required to send us a copy, similarly when we send a notice and it's posted on the city's website, maybe electronically, that's electronic, you know, there's the ability for the city to host their proposed details of the neighborhood meeting. Maybe there's a way that this could be a part of the amendment as well, that this, the developers required to provide the city with the date and time of the meeting and then we advertise that. Maybe that's a consideration for us as well as part of this amendment.
I think that would be great. I know some of the other cities around us do do that, but yeah. And that even people on their website can go in and say, I live in this neighborhood. So anything that, you know, I live in.
Yeah, or it's, it could be like our public notices, you know, and then we, we have a public notices for a planning commission separately, we could have neighborhood meeting notices.
Yeah. No, that's a great suggestion and I'm sorry I called you Matt, because you're not Matt. But that's a, I like that. What do you guys think about adding it to the website?
It's a good idea.
Are there those changes that he can just make right now that we can approve now or?
We can. We can also choose to continue this item. This is also a public hearing, so I do technically, at some point, we'll need to open a public hearing, but we're just still hashing out stuff for a few more minutes, unless there's something else. And, oh, go ahead.
And you do not need to hold a public hearing.
I don't.
If you want us.
Oh, I can, yeah, we can continue it.
You can continue it and have us come back with some things. And at some point, hold a public hearing on it.
You could even ask the four people in the room.
I was gonna ask the four, does anyone want to comment on public notice? On public notice? Okay.
He's a general developer.
Yeah, give him just, yeah, he might have some good information. I'm willing to, if we have any questions on what we're discussing, is there any more that we want to talk right now?
I like everything that's been discussed.
Then I'm gonna open it to a public hearing. You are limited to three minutes this time.
That, that's great. No, I just, you were asking like what other cities do and stuff. I've done this quite a bit with other cities. And a couple of things that they do is they'll have like, the envelopes be pretty stamped. And then they'll deliver that to the city and the city will actually put the letter in and send them off so that they know when it was sent out and what content was sent out. So it's all pretty standardized. Typically I do see 500 feet, but sometimes it'll say like, if it hits the middle of a neighborhood, then you include the whole neighborhood, something like that. But that's kind of the most, more standard stuff that I see with it, but just food for thought. I don't, I'm not really invested in it, but figured if you had those questions, so.
No, that, it's appreciated.
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, then we will close the public hearing and we can also have another one next time as well, so.
Do we need to make a motion to continue this then, because it's?
We can, but as long as there's nothing else we want to discuss on these items tonight. Does anyone have anything else?
I don't.
I, I liked some of his ideas. One of them was obviously like mine, the obstructed, so we include the whole neighborhood.
But if he goes this far, then you include.
But yeah, I mean, I, I did, and this would lead, be a logistic thing. The city would have to figure out how that would all work if they were to kind of mail them out. But I do like the fact that they know when it got mailed out, right? Cause it's hard to know, right? When, well, they said they mailed it.
Cause you guys are operating in a black box here of that, right? Like you just have to trust that they've sent it out, that they've done this, that. How does staff feel about having to be responsible for actually mailing them out?
It's, it doesn't bother me in the sense that they're still providing that, that notice and we're checking it and sending it out, making sure it goes out, it doesn't bother me. But the only question I have and it is, and I wasn't here when this, obviously when this was instituted as an idea, I don't know how much separation was intended from the get-go. That this is a neighborhood meeting that we require by ordinance. But we, just looking at it from the outside, we seem to have stayed kind of out of it as staff, maybe on purpose. And I don't know if that's the case or not. So, but we can check around and ask.
Gary?
The, the only concern I would have is a, a practical and this is the nature of my position of the more work staff has to do, there's a cost to that. You know, because we're not doing other things. And so we'd have to make an estimate of, you know, what this would likely cost us, what type of fees do we charge, when do we charge? You know, right now, we will generate a mailing list for them and then they do all the work.
And they know when it's to be mailed by, but sometimes evidently they're not adhering to the required date. But who would even report that is not happening?
Yeah, and there's nothing in there that says, you know, the, the postmark has to be by a certain. You know, because if they came in and it's like, oh, well, here's the postmark, it wasn't postmarked by this date. This neighborhood meeting doesn't count. And then who enforces that?
And the general public wouldn't know of that requirement of two weeks in advance or whatever the required postmark data is. We, we just have to trust them to see that it's done unless we do it ourselves. Otherwise you wouldn't have any assurance that it's been done.
Yeah, I was just checking my calendar to see if I give them the benefit of the doubt. But the fourth was Tuesday, so it wasn't, wasn't late Saturday and then it got mailed on.
But how much, how much of a burden is it on the city if they bring all of the letters ready to mail out and drop them off? Doesn't the mailman take that with him when he picks up the mail?
Yes, and now you're asking me to ensure that our staff has the resources to stuff envelopes. We've got them all, we haven't misplaced anything, we get them into the mail on time.
Why would there be stuffing of envelopes? They're, they're to bring them to you already addressed, stamped and just ready to.
Well, we would have to verify that they have the right materials in them and things like that, because.
There is an onus that we put onto the city, if you make them responsible for it. And I think it should, I do think it should be held by the applicant. It's their application, they're coming to us, they're asking us for something. It should be their responsibility. And I think the postmark, like I, I'm cool with the postmark, mostly because I think it is something that we can say, look, you didn't do this, this is a technical violation that might kick you back.
I would make it clear that, you know, the improper postmark can be a reason to reject your, your plan outright. So if we get a neighborhood meeting and you didn't give the notice required by code.
Probably just require them.
Your application is null and you can get it, resubmit it.
As opposed to just having them have to hold another public.
I would make, I'd be stiff and they wouldn't come back, because it costs money to submit a plan. And so they would make sure they mailed it when they were supposed to mail. And they wouldn't deck around with it because they don't want to spend all the money to do it again.
You'd fight a hard bargain, Mike, but it makes sense.
Well, you know, I mean, I, yeah. It's, 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 it's hard because yes, a lot of times we are dealing with just neighborhood people who are trying to make a small adjustment.
Yeah.
And, but that's rarely the people, the, that are causing the problem in the first place or have people con- concerned about what's going on in their neighborhood. You know, because they wanna, oh, I'm getting, you know, twenty feet from my neighbor's back. Well, you know, nobody cares. And so those aren't really the people that, you know, are causing the problem. So.
Well, yes, fundamentally, the question is, are these issues of significance from history? Where people aren't getting their, uh, notifications in time? And we're not, uh, sending them to the appropriate, uh, uh, breadth of neighborhoods? Is it an issue that there's much complained about? I don't know.
I gather that there, there have been instances, yeah, where not.
I've seen lots of people complain.
Get a notice, don't get one.
Okay, because I, I have not, but. But you have.
And this is.
I've been the recipient.
Yeah.
And over the last few years, this has been the distance issue specifically has been one that we've brought up because with different things. It's kind of had different effects. I mean, like, I, I think we had a school. Like cell tower thing, but because of where it was, it only hit a couple of homes. Whereas there could have been a wider swath.
Okay.
Cause I think it was only the five hundred instead of the thousand. So it didn't. And so from time to time, yes, I think that there is a greater area that would prefer to be noticed. And that thousand feet would apply both to the yellow notice cards and to the neighborhood.
Our yellow notice cards, we would have, that's a different section.
That's a whole different section.
Yeah, this is just the neighbor notice.
Just the neighbor. Okay, that's a good.
Neighbor notice meetings that the, the applicants conduct themselves.
Yeah.
Ours are a different section. We, we'd have to adjust that separately. If you want us to look at that.
Okay, but those are two separate, but that's good to know for what we're doing. Right? Thank you.
A thousand feet, uh, I mean, that's, if the circumference of that would be a considerably, uh, greater number of. Letters that would need to be sent, I would think, and the expense of that would be pretty good, could be.
It could be significant.
In M R eight, it's about ten houses in, in the direction.
That's not a lot, too.
No, it's. For five or, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it's about a hundred frontage per.
That's it. Yeah, it's eighty, but yeah.
Yeah, it just depends on how they divide it.
Yeah.
Mine's almost a hundred, but it's not as deep.
But it's a minimum eighty feet. That's all I'm saying. So, okay, is there anything else? I mean, I think we have, we generally want to continue this to update some of this language and, uh, incorporate some of our ideas, our proposals.
I love it.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to continue?
I would.
Or whatever you want to do.
I'd like to motion to continue.
I second that motion.
Okay. Britton moved and Rod seconded that we continue this to our next meeting. We have to continue to a specific date. So our next meeting is March.
March fifth.
Fifth. So we'll continue this till March fifth. Okay. Then is there anything else?
Vote.
Oh, thank you. Rod?
Hi.
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 Okay, I'm just apparently done. So Gary, do you have anything?
Yeah, if I could, um. With the amount of time that I hesitated on my vote on the previous item, um, I'm wondering if you guys will entertain me. Uh, if I could get a second maybe to, to reconsider the vote on the Ken Garf, uh, rezone.
Do you like to reconsider the vote?
Well, Gary, are we allowed to reconsider the vote?
You are allowed to re.
That's a reason to.
You are allowed to reconsider a vote. Uh, and since usually if it's done where, uh, someone in the majority needs to reconsider. But this where it was a three-three tie, anybody could make a motion to reconsider. So, uh, if someone wants to make a motion to reconsider, uh, there's no hard and fast rule. Usually it's the same meeting. Um, once it goes to council, it's too late. The recommendation's off. So at this point, there's been a motion to reconsider the Ken Garf vote. Um, the next procedure would be a second, and if there's a second discussion, and then you can have a vote. If it's a majority vote to reconsider, then you can open it back up, reconsider in another motion or whatever it may be in vote. If it's a three-three tie, then the motion fails for lack of a majority.
Okay. So to reiterate, we have a motion to reconsider item four point one. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay. And then we can have a discussion about it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I was just thinking about, um, holistically for a city.
Point of order, do we need to vote on the motion to reconsider first?
No, it's second. It's on the, it's, it's before us. And so we're discussing it before we vote.
It's a discussion on the motion. It's not a discussion on.
Yeah, should we reopen it? Yeah, that's fair. Sorry.
Yeah, I just, I think with decisions with, with more significant impact, I'd like to, to go over and, and reanalyze in my mind. All the variances that I can, that I can consider. Um, and so for that reason, I'd like to reconsider the vote.
Anyone else want to speak?
Um, I don't think that the impact to the vote actually makes a large difference and it's just spinning our wheels personally. So I wouldn't recommend that we re-vote.
And I agree. I think just because, I mean, how, how different a really good vote's gonna be. So I'm wondering if it's, if there's no significant reason to, to not, it would take, you know, five seconds.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't if, uh, if it now became, uh, four to two, wouldn't the recommendation be a positive one to the city council as opposed to?
Yes, assuming everyone keeps their vote exactly the same.
Yeah. So it may have some implications. Uh, anyway.
Comments?
I'm okay. If you feel like you want to discuss it a little bit more, I'm okay with that. I mean. Now, as Gary said, now's the time to do it. If we're gonna do it, it's tonight before it goes to the city council.
I, I'm gonna live here a long time. I want to make sure that I'm happy with the city that I'm, that I live in.
Jerry, do you wanna, are you for or against us reconsidering item four point one?
Very neutral. I'll say aye.
Well, we're not voting. We're just saying whether or not we're, we're just discussing it. And I guess on my part, it is very difficult. I think a split no recommendation, this is just my opinion, because obviously I made the last vote, is probably the more accurate, correct one to send to city council than a for or against. Cause what they will get is our motion, which is that we were voting on the, changing it to a C two. With, um, with the development agreement. So that's what they will see.
True.
That, that was what we were split on. Cause I think the truth is all of us are split to some level.
Right.
On what it is. So I think in that sense, it accurately represents where we all feel. Um, but.
We, I can make one comment on it. If you want to see what that, this kind of decision does, just go look around the mall.
Yeah.
That was all residential.
Understood.
And that's what this motion does.
But ultimately, we don't make, okay.
Well, the piece of property that is currently zoned as C two is on twelve hundred south. If you're talking about an Arby's or a McDonald's on the corner of two hundred east and twelve hundred south, that's already approved.
Right.
So I don't, I don't see, and I live in that vicinity. I think I live closer to that than anyone in this group. So I know that road and, uh, and I appreciate the comments that were made. But, uh, to me, uh, this is a good thing. It unloads the trucks more expeditiously. Uh, if you go there and, and drive through those, uh, maze of cars, to have to unload a truck. And to take the cars where they have to take them, it'd be a pain in the butt.
Yeah.
To be able to take them as quickly as they can. It ta- it takes them, uh, I, I talked to the people there that do it, more than one of them. And I, I'm, I got the same story from separate conversations. To me, it, it really is a no-brainer.
So Jim, are you for or against? We're talking specifically about the motion to rediscuss this. So you are against.
If you want to discuss it. Well, no, I'm, I'm in favor of reopening it.
Reopening it?
Yeah, I don't think the request would be made unless you're, uh, more strongly considering this. And I think a positive recommendation to the city council. Uh, would have more merit than a, a neutral one personally.
Yeah, and I'm happy to explain, uh, my reasonings.
Okay.
Behind, you know, uh, uh, more favorability, if you, if you're willing to hear it.
Okay.
Tell us.
Well, no, but we have to finish the vote on this motion to reopen it. So we'll go to vote now for reopening.
I'll say aye.
Reopening?
Nay.
Nay.
Yes.
Yes.
And then we'll say yes. I'll say yes. So we will, I will say yes. Yes, aye.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. And the, okay, then we will reopen item four point one for discussion.
I think, uh, a point that Rod had made earlier that I had not put a lot of weight into at the time that he said it. I think now I'm seeing a, a more long-term, uh, benefit. For me personally, when I'm, when I'm considering things in the planning commission, I. I sometimes get too into the details and I sometimes need to step back. And I think that's something that's really important to me on a governmental perspective. Is, is not overcomplicating things. And I think the number of P Ds that we have, I think is something that I'd like to work on. You know, throughout my time living in Orem. And I think that an opportunity to decrease, you know, the number of P Ds into something that's more streamlined. Get our number of, of zones down to a more manageable level. It's more comprehensible to citizens is something that I think I do value. And so for that reason, I think that I'd like to, to reconsider that vote. And so I'd like to, to motion, or sorry, I'll let, open up for discussion.
Can I just ask a clarification? So is your concern? The P D or the concern is making the C two make sense? Uh, I'm trying, sorry, I'm trying to understand.
Sure, sure, sure. So my original driver was the P D, was an amended P D. Um, but at this point, it's, you know, it's going as a C, a C two with a development agreement, which I don't have any problems with. If we're not gonna go with the P D five option, right? And I think that generally, I think I would rather see that area be a C two, a C, a C two as opposed to, you know, an additional or a continued. Complicated P D, you know, amendment or something like that. So i- if it's, if it's become be, between tomato and tomato, then I don't have any beef with the tomato, right? Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And that's what they've chosen. They've chosen the C two extension as opposed to extending the P D and.
Right. So if we, if we're not gonna oppose it, if we're not gonna shoot for a P D five, then I'm, then I'm willing to, to amend to a, a C two with a. Uh, development agreement like we've, like we stated.
And as a general aside about your comments about P D, yes, there are fifty-something P Ds. And I think P Ds have been used a lot. I think this goes back to our general plan discussion. I think it goes back to a lot of things. I think P Ds have been resorted to for a long time for. This is just a guess. Somebody can correct me, but it seems to me, just as a citizen, that it, they're used so that they, we can control what goes into a very specific place. And because I don't think other aspects of our code are robust enough to deal with some of the things people specifically want. And I do think that there is definitely discussion that we need to have about long-term, about P Ds in general.
Sure. Yeah. And that's, I think that's it for me. I think as I was on the fence as it was, you, you noted the pause that I had. You know, it is splitting hairs and, and, yeah, I think on a more holistic approach, I think that any opportunity that I, that I can get to get rid of a, a P D for some reason or another. I mentioned that as being on top of.
P D.
Um, say it again?
It does not get rid of the P D zone.
Um.
There is still the P D five, just turning residential houses into a commercial house.
Sure, sure, sure. So, so the fact that I was on the fence as it was, because of Jim's and Rod's points of the. Increased safety factor and the decreased amount of time the truck is out there, because I can't stop the business from doing the business stuff. Right? I'm, I'm not in a position to dictate whether that truck can be on that road or not.
We are.
That's helpful. Um, I just, I just think that it's because I was on the fence as it was. I think that if it's between a tomato, tomato, whether it's a P D amended or the C one.
One might argue they're not supposed to be on a residential road because it's not commercial business.
And that's fair. And that's understandable. And I've, and I've, it's something that I have a consideration into. And it's, it's, it's tough, you know, it's, this is a situation that's frustrating for me.
So with due respect to Mike, I think we're overstating the impact to changing this to a C two. We're talking about a small plot of land. We're talking about a role to, for all intents and purposes, is we use a lot more than a residential road. So it becomes a safety issue.
Yeah, and I, and.
So from my perspective, I may add, we either believe in less government. Or we don't. And if we're getting into the thing of splitting hairs and modifying P D fives, then we're adding to bureaucracy. So we either believe in free market, less government, let people solve problems, or we don't. And that's where I'm coming from. I mean, you can say a lot that may or may not happen in the future. The reality is we don't have any control over the future. And my opinion is less government is always better. Cause some, we government a lot of times get in the way.
If there's no other discussion, I'm ready to move forward.
Anything else? Gary?
We are reconsidering it. So we need to, uh, reconsider the same motion.
Okay, so it's the same motion that goes forward?
Yes.
It's the reconsideration of the, of the motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Unless somebody wants to make a substitute motion, then you would deal with a substitute motion first. And then if necessary, deal with the original motion, the main motion.
The motion that Rod made.
So we're reconsidering, in saying we're reconsidering that, we're just really opening it up to vote for the for or against the exact same thing? Cause we've already voted to reconsider.
Yes, and.
Oh, and we have to have the vote.
And now you are reconsidering that motion.
I thought we had done that already.
Yeah, we had. I thought we had done that too.
Well, you had a motion to reconsider.
Reconsider.
So now you're reconsidering.
It's a very drawn out box. You have to pull each, each little box out of the bigger box in order to get back to the motion.
Ready to pull the little.
They're all nested dolls. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So how do we motion this?
So we need a motion to reconsider.
Which is already done.
Which has already been done and voted for. So you had been having a discussion on what your vote will now be as you reconsider the motion. And so at some point you can call for a vote, but the vote is on, uh, Rod's motion and Jim's second. Which was recommend approval of the C two zone. With the condition of a development agreement that would restrict. Uh, the zoned area to have a gate for employees only. And for loading and unloading, bringing in, uh, inventory. And, uh, keeping, you know, whatever their proposed site plan is. You know, the, the parking and things like that. They, they have a development agreement to do that. That's what the vote's about now.
Okay. So.
So we don't need to re-motion and start voting?
Yeah.
Unless somebody wants to, through this discussion, make a substitute motion of some sort.
Yes. But we are tied right now to exactly what we moved, what we voted on. So he makes amendment. Is anyone gonna make an amendment?
Let's see if I got this right. I moved, we.
Well, you've already, you've already moved, that's done.
Unless you want to change it.
No, I don't want to.
We're gonna keep it exactly the same.
So how do we get it forward?
Voting again, that's all.
So now we just go to vote. If there's no more discussion, are we ready to close discussion? Then we will.
Call the question.
Then I will go to vote. Rod?
Aye.
Jerry?
Nay.
Mike?
Nay.
Jim?
Yes, aye.
Britton?
Aye.
See. Cause see, I'm on the fence too.
Cause I'm telling you. Cause I'm telling you.
That's why I.
I, I can see every perspective. I understand that with great enthusiasm.
And see, that is, I see my vote's my vote and that is why I still stand by what I said. Which is, I think the best recommendation is a mixed one. So I am going to flip and I am gonna vote nay. And so that it stays three, three and that we still have no recommendation because I still maintain that that actually represents what, how we really are all feeling about this.
And I can appreciate that.
And, and to your point, we've all had to make decisions. I think we've all made decisions. Like maybe I'm speaking for myself, but I've walked away and I thought a day later, I'm like, why did I vote that way? I probably really should have voted the other way. We have to live with that. That's just part of the job.
Well, yes, the, the question could be posed, the sequence of voting. You're the one, I guess, that determines the sequence. And in doing that, you had.
Yes, but as chair.
That's standard with the chair.
But that's standard as a chair. I'm, I'm supposed to be the tiebreaker, like really, if I know it's gonna be seven, zero, one way or the other. You know, but when it comes down to some of the tougher ones, that is my role, is to be tiebreaker. It would help if we had our seventh person here tonight just for numbers, right? Cause then it would skew it a little bit, but so that's a three to three, so it will stand as still being a no recommendation to city council. So.
I motion adjourn.
Well, I was gonna ask Gary one more time if he had anything else to say.
Uh, to, today, I, uh, the first, uh, employees, it was announced we'll be moving into the new building on March thirteenth.
Awesome.
Beginning that process. So, uh, in not too long, we'll be holding our first meeting in the new building.
That's exciting.
Gonna give us a tour?
Uh, no.
City council has already got a favor.
City council, they got one.
Yes, if, uh.
I motion to get a tour.
Uh, we can, we can arrange that. Um, I'll, let me work on that tomorrow and I'll send you out an email, uh, when you could have a tour of, uh, the building. And when you go and it's not open, you have to wear hard hats and vests and eye protection. Uh, but we'll, we'll look into that and we'll get you out an email about, uh, a time that we could do that. Hopefully that works for you all. And if it doesn't, uh, let me know and we'll see if we can come up with something different.
So, thank you. It'd be awesome. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I already did. It was on the.
I seconded it.
Okay. The then Mike, we hope to Jim seconded that we adjourn. Rod?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
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 I moved to reconsider.
No.
I, I'm just saying she was out of order by.